The meeting for October 11th, 2021 of the Canby Planning Commission. Is everybody signed on, has signed in as far as you know, Laney?
It looks like it.
Okay. Um, let's see, we'll start with the invocation, make that one quick. So, um, we'll bless this meeting and all the participants. Help the commissioners make wise decisions that will benefit citizens of Canby. And we'll go forth from there. Now for the, uh, the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Um. Consent items. Um. Planning Commission minutes for June 14th, June 28th, and July 12th. Is that correct?
June 23rd.
23rd, yes.
Yeah. That is not on my. Not on my agenda item, I have the 14th, 28th, and the 12th. So that, the 23rd is not on my agenda. Sorry about that.
Um, actually, that is, that's a typo there, that should be the 28th. Cause that was the one that was, so it wasn't the 23rd, so you're correct, John.
Okay. So, we, do we have to have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes from the previous three meetings, from those three meetings.
Thank you, Jason, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Move on to, uh, citizen input on non-agenda items, Laney, do you have any? Citizens, uh, that wish to speak?
None.
Okay. Uh, Don, do we have any new business?
I know we can proceed right ahead into the hearings.
Okay. Okay, uh, we will move to, did I miss something?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, we're going to the, the Canby Beer, Beer Library. Um. Bear with me for a minute, that's DR 21-06. The ma, this matter, um, will require a public hearing, all interested persons shall be heard on the matter. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson. Who will represent the entire group. You may be limited by time for your presentation. The applicant will have a total of 15 minutes to speak. The proponents will be allowed five minutes each, and the opponents will be allowed five minutes each. Those that are neutral will have, uh, five minutes. The applicant will then have 10 minutes for rebuttal. All questions must be directed through the chair. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff. And presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria contained in the staff report, the comprehensive plan. Or other land use regulations which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker. And the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. May preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. At this time, I would ask that any member of the hearing body who has a conflict of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the conflict. And whether you intend to participate in or abstain from hearing the present matter.
Chair Savory, this is Jason.
Hi, Jason.
I just want to make, uh, make it, put it on the record that I was in attendance at the city council meeting where this. Presentation was given to the council, so I had previous, um, previously known about this plan. Uh, but do not feel that that's necessarily a conflict of interest and plan to participate.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, yeah, I attended the same planning commission, uh, the city council. And I also plan on participating tonight.
Thank you very much. But also, if any member of the hearing body has had any experte contact with anyone prior to this hearing. Including a visit to the site, please declare the nature and extent of such contact. At this time. I don't think there's anybody here that is not driven by it, been in the building. Um, speculated about what it's gonna turn, was gonna turn into, so. Does anybody have any? Ex parte contact that they feel needs to be aired out?
Commissioner Hutchinson, I was there earlier this afternoon.
Okay, was there beer?
Um, not there.
Okay, perfect. Um, I don't know if we have any members of the audience that have any questions for commissioners regarding. Ex parte contact or conflict of interest. Okay. So here's how, uh, the meeting will be, hearing will be conducted. First, we'll have the staff report. Then questions, if any, by the, uh, hearing body or staff. Then we'll open the public hearing for testimony, the applicant. Uh, will present their case, uh, not more than 15 minutes. Proponents, uh, not more than five minutes each. Opponents, uh, not more than five minutes each. Those that are, uh, neutral on the matter, uh, five minutes each. And then rebuttal if necessary, uh, by the applicant, not more than 10 minutes. At that time, we'll close the public testimony. Questions, if any, by the hearing body, and then we'll discuss it. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing. Where the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date that you will receive. Any questions? Okay. Uh, who's gonna present to us tonight? Don?
Uh, that will be Eric, um, Chair Savory.
Okay. Eric, it's all, the floor is yours.
Alright, thank you, Chair Savory. My name's Eric Forsom, I'm an associate planner with the City of Canby Planning Department. The first item for the planning commission to consider today is, or tonight, rather, is a public hearing for. Uh, DR 2106, Canby Beer Library. And this is processed as a design review type three application. So this is a rendering that the applicant supplied with their submission. Um, gives you an idea generally how it could look if it were approved. It's going to be located at the former libraries of the city of Canby, which is on North Holly Street, 292. And the applicant's proposal is essentially an extensive interior and exterior remodel of the city's former public library. And the conversion would be into a commercial mixed-use building. And the, uh, building would include the following uses. A brewery with indoor dining and then a covered section, second-story outdoor dining terrace, which you could see in that previous image. Or micro kitchens, um, that open into the interior of the brewery restaurant, and then three retail spaces with their own storefronts on Northwest Third. And to accommodate those uses, the project would comprehensively remodel the existing building, including seismic and structural retrofits. The proposed building itself would be a contemporary architectural style with a mixture of concrete. Masonry units, CMU blocks, shiplap siding, metal, wood, and glass. And the entrance of the brewery would be on South Holly Street and framed out by a decorative concrete block wall feature, which you can see in that image. And the roof terrace would be covered by a heavy timber roof structure that slopes upward toward Wake Park. And that is intended to provide customers views of the surrounding area, including the park and some of downtown. A little bit about the subject property itself, on the right, you can see some aerial imagery of the location. Um, right there on the corner of North Holly and Northwest Third. It's also identified as Clackamas County map, assessor's map and tax lot 31E 33C, a tax lot 7800. The site itself is approximately a quarter of an acre, and as I had mentioned before, it's formerly the City of Canby Library Building. So the zoning of the property, as you can see, it's, um, zone C1 Downtown Commercial. Also has the downtown commercial overlay zone and is in the core commercial sub-area. And then you'll also notice that the entire surrounding area has a similar zoning, so there's no, no real differences between neighboring properties. Uh, we back up. So these are the approval criteria that, uh, the planning commission is charged with when reviewing this application. First are the general provisions, off-street parking and loading. The downtown commercial zone, C1. The downtown Canby overlay zone. Outdoor lighting standards, site and design review. And then, uh, some procedural aspects as well as signs. So the city of Canby had a, a pre-application conference on June 9th of this year. Staff, uh, did some analysis, spoke with the applicant. And we determined that a traffic impact analysis, or, or the more abbreviated version of traffic analysis letter. Would not be required as, for this project. I'm gonna go over the reasoning for that. So, when we were thinking about this and the traffic analysis, um, we considered these factors. So this wasn't an existing structure that generated relatively large average daily trips. Formerly, it was a public library. Um, libraries in general tend to generate large amounts of trips. We actually have some data from the current library that suggests that upwards of 1,400, uh, trips a month. And that's during COVID. Um. We also considered that the commercial core area does not require parking, there's, uh, no parking requirements for the zone. An urbanized area tends to reduce parking and also allows for other modes of transportation. Especially for this type of establishment, it's not altogether uncommon to see. Uh, ride sharing, bicycles, walking, other methods of transportation that might not involve a car. We also, as staff, believe that driving downtowns are, will generate new trips. And generally, they should be encouraged, we're, we're wanting to bring people downtown, um, and that's seen as a benefit generally. And then the surrounding street grids have a high level of continuity, um, they're very, uh, angular, so there's 90 degrees. There's a general easy understanding about where you can park in the surrounding area. And pretty easy to flow in and out of the surrounding area. And, um. There's also a wider range of potential parking areas, there's, there's quite a bit of parking, um, actually close to City Hall, there's a lot of on-street parking available. And, um, altogether, those factors led to the planning staff to waive a traffic analysis in this instance. Talk a bit about parking. So pursuant to section 1610, 10B, which is the parking standards of the Canby Municipal Code. There's a, uh, specific exemption for development within the downtown core. To provide off-street parking, and this property, as we saw earlier in a couple slides back, is in the downtown core, it's in the downtown core overlay zone. And as such, um, there's no off-street parking required for uses that are permitted outright in the C1 zone. Um, in addition, we do believe that some, there, there needs to be some improvements to sidewalks, um, which is somewhat similar. Are somewhat ancillary related to parking. And that's a condition to bring, improve or redesign, uh, adjacent sidewalks to ADA standards. To talk a bit about the downtown commercial zone itself. So in section 162210, there's a variety of outright permitted uses. Um, some of these include commercial, retail, office spaces, public uses, and then does allow for some residential uses if they're part of a mixed-use type of development. This project, as I had mentioned briefly before, features a brewery, some micro kitchens, and retail space. And all of these are permitted outright in the C1 zone. And then, uh, there is a special, um, consideration in that brew pubs are only allowed when the floor space used for the manufacturing of beverages does not exceed 7,000 square feet. And in this instance, the brewery is proposed to be roughly around 1,000 square feet. And then another 950 or so, um, dedicated to walk-in cooler space. So well below that 7,000 threshold. Reason this is important is that what we're looking to review here is the design review aspects, and that this doesn't require. Another layer of conditional use permitting. So I'm gonna get a bit into the design review itself. Chapter 1622 provides a design review matrix for projects in the C1 zone. And that's found at 162240. And that replaces the general design review matrix shown in 1649, which is the design review chapter. In the applicant's narrative that was supplied to the city. They identified a self-score of 15 out of 23 points, which is approximately 65%. That's page 13 and 16 of the applicant's project narrative. Planning staff evaluated it and thought, actually, there was a bit, it was a bit higher. And we counted 17 out of 21, which equates to 80.9%. And 65% is, is the benchmark here, that's the amount that is required in order to pass, quote-unquote, pass the design review matrix. Um, the reason we scored some more points is, we do believe that there's some, um, some of the design review matrix that doesn't apply. One of them being the recommended color palette, um, we don't believe that that color palette is sufficiently available. To require applicants to comply, and then we reduce the points accordingly, and that, um. Is a built-in item in our design review criteria. We don't penalize applicants for trying to make design review points that they can't feasibly make. So I want to talk a bit about the downtown Canby overlay zone and how this project fits within those requirements. The zone itself includes a pretty detailed purpose statement for the zone. And generally is encouraged to create a more dense mix of pedestrian-friendly uses and buildings that complement each other architecturally. And are intended to kind of create a sense of place, can be viewed as attractive and create a safe overall environment for visitors and residents. The development standards in this area are found in 1641050, and I'm gonna talk about the project's consistency with those standards. And I'll try and be brief, I know this will be a little bit text-heavy, but, um, not really a good way to describe it otherwise. So one of the first items is setbacks. And the statement basically requires that buildings placed in the core commercial sub-area zone. Are required to be set back a maximum of 10 feet from the street, the minimum of 60% of the building at the minimum setback, which is zero feet. Those setbacks are really intended to bring structures close to the public realm. In this instance, the existing building covers the entirety of the subject property and has no setbacks from Northwest Third or North Holly Street. Therefore, this criterion is met. Um. It's actually a perfect example of what the code was intending. The next is Florida area ratio. This is, um, kind of gets into how many floors you need for, um, building lot area. So, uh, buildings in the core commercial sub-area are required to have at least a Florida area, Florida area ratio of .8. And a maximum building footprint of 30,000 square feet. And a maximum building height of 60 feet. This proposed adaptive reuse, so we're reusing an existing structure, meets all these criteria. The building's just under 11,000 square feet, and therefore achieves a Florida area ratio of one. Um, because it covers the entirety of the lot, and the whole, the whole lot is covered by the building, so you get a ratio of one, which is above .8. Uh, next we'll talk about screening, um, there's some requirements about screening. Especially related to garbage and mechanical equipment. Um. Wherever possible, these facilities are encouraged to be located away from public view. And in this case, the proposed project, garbage and recycling facilities are gonna be located in the alley away from public view. And set back approximately 85 feet from North Holly Street. The applicant's mittel indicates that mechanical equipment, like HVAC, um, that type of stuff will be. Screened and/or roof-mounted behind the building's parapets. They're not sure of the final placement of the mechanical equipment, um, needs to get fleshed out a bit, but we do have a condition of approval in the staff report ensuring compliance with that standard. So, um, getting a bit more into the design review standards, uh. So again, 1641 denotes, devotes, excuse me, considerable attention to the physical appearance and design of buildings downtown. They're located in 1641070, and I'm gonna discuss this project's consistent, consistency with those criteria generally. The first statement is that, uh. There is requirements for pedestrian-oriented ground floors. And in the core commercial sub-area, transparent windows are required to compromise, compromise comprise a minimum of 60% of a primary ground-level street-facing facade's length in plain area. And in the project's narrative, the proposed elevations along Northwest Holly and Northwest Third feature a large amount of windows, and they generally meet the glazing requirement for the, the facades. Um, compared to what the building looks like today, it would dramatically increase the amount of transparency and visibility into the structure. Right now, you're, it's mostly just looking at a wall, um, so it's gonna open up those walls, put in windows, and it generally meets. The antenna of the pedestrian-oriented ground floors for windows and, uh, visible transparency. There's a requirement for building entries and doors, and, um, as required in the applicant's mittel, the proposed building. Has a prominent entry oriented to and directly connected to the sidewalk. In that first slide, or one of the first slides I showed you with the, the, uh, black, um, entrance, I have some more images that I'm gonna show here later, it. It definitely demonstrates a prominent entry and door, you will, you can tell that as you're approaching the building. As it's proposed, that you've, you've basically landed at the entrance, um. And that's really the idea, it gives it the sense of place and a sense of entry. Um, there's a requirement for transition areas, and, um, because the, this is an adaptive reuse of an existing structure. It's not really feasible to have transition areas because it, um, it doesn't comprise an entire block. And those standards don't really apply in this instance. So I'll go a bit more into these, um, the next requirement is cohesive architectural elements. And in the applicant's mittel, there, the proposed awnings, windows, and decorative masonry create architectural base. But they still preserve the buil, the building's existing wall planes along the sidewalk in that close proximity to the sidewalk. Um, giving it a, you know, a close, um, proximity to the public realm. In particular, the elevation facing Northwest Third features three repeating sets of doors and window panels and awning. And then it's kind of finished off by decorative accents, which include window mullions, lighting fixtures, and blade signs, which will. Create a type of repeating architectural rhythm, which is encouraged by the code. Next is the corners. And then, uh, again, some limitations because this is an adaptive reuse project. Uh, there's not a ton of ability to emphasize the corners. Um, the building's corner facing Wake Park is not chamfered, and nor does it feature a plaza or. for the, the facades. Compared to what the building looks like today, it would dramatically increase the amount of transparency and visibility into the structure. Right now, you're, it's mostly just looking at a wall. So it's going to open up those walls, put in windows, and it generally meets the antenna of the pedestrian-oriented ground floors for windows and visible transparency. There's a requirement for building entries and doors, and as required in the applicant's mittel, the proposed building has a prominent entry oriented to and directly connected to the sidewalk. In that first slide, or one of the first slides I showed you with the, the black entrance, I have some more images that I'm going to show here later. It definitely demonstrates a prominent entry and door. You can tell that as you're approaching the building, as it's proposed, that you've, you've basically landed at the entrance. And that's really the idea, gives it the sense of place and a sense of entry. There's a requirement for transition areas, and because this is an adaptive reuse of an existing structure, it's not really feasible to have transition areas because it, it doesn't comprise an entire block, and those standards don't really apply in this instance. So I'll go a bit more into these. The next requirement is cohesive architectural elements. And in the applicant's mittel, the proposed awnings, windows, and decorative masonry create architectural base, but they still preserve the buildings' existing wall planes along the sidewalk in that close proximity to the sidewalk, giving, you know, a close proximity to the public realm. In particular, the elevation facing Northwest Third features three repeating sets of doors and window panels and awning. And then it's kind of finished off by decorative accents, which include window mullions, lighting fixtures, and blade signs, which will create a type of repeating architectural rhythm, which is encouraged by the code. Next is the corners. And then, again, some limitations because this is an adaptive reuse project. There's not a ton of ability to emphasize the corners. The building's corner facing Wake Park is not chamfered, nor does it feature a plaza or, or an arcade, which is suggested by the code. But as I had mentioned previously, it does employ a prominent architectural element within twenty-five feet of the corner. And also, the second-story roof terrace with the heavy timber structure that slopes upward with the street, towards the street corner in Wake Park, kind of creates a similar effect. The next, next component are materials. And this project, as proposed, is, will include a broad range of materials, including CMU, standard and decorative blocking, cement, hardy plank, siding, wood, glass, and metal, so a variety of materials to create visual interest and a sense of permanence. And then, we had already mentioned colors component earlier. So some images, you know, this picture is worth a thousand words here. So on the left, you can see the pedestrian-oriented ground floor with cohesive architectural elements and glazing of the repeating windows. There's the prominent entryway and doors directly connected to the sidewalk. You can see that different material of the entryway, a lot of glazing and similar colors gives it a sense of permanence. And let me back up. These are elevations that were submitted by the applicant. And this is the elevation facing North Third. You have pedestrian-oriented ground floor with cohesive architectural elements and glazing. A lot of glazing is definitely opening up the facade of the structure. You can see the repeating architectural elements and materials from the door awnings themselves, the glazing. And then, as I had mentioned before, the prominent architectural element was rooftop terrace. So that's facing North Third. Oops. And that's North Holly. So these are the site and design review criteria that planning commission is generally charged with when reviewing these types of projects. The site development, including the plan, architecture, and landscaping graphic design, should be in conformance with the standards of this chapter and other applicable city ordinances, as so far as location, height, and appearance of the proposed development. The design of the development is compatible with the design of other developments in the same general vicinity. Location, design, size, color, and materials of the exterior of all structures and signs are compatible with the proposed development and appropriate to the design-charactered structures in the same vicinity. The proposed development incorporates the use of LID, which is Low-Impact Development, best management practices wherever feasible, based on soil and site conditions. The reality with this project is because it's an adaptive reuse of an existing building that covers the entire, entire footprint of the lot, there's not, not a ton of opportunity to employ LID techniques. And then, the board, and re- as planning commission shall in making its determination of compliance with the ordinance to use the matrix in sixteen forty-nine forty to determine compatibility unless it's superseded by another specific zone. And then it speaks towards accumulating the necessary points. And then lastly, streetlights, and streetlight installation may be required on any public street or roadway as part of the design review application. So with all that being said, staff recommend that the planning commission approve DR-21-06 Canby Beer Library with the associated conditions of approval stated in the staff report. And I am open for questions by the planning commission at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. That was a very thorough presentation. Thank you so much. Commissioner Bogright, do you have any questions for Eric? Commissioner Bogright with us. Okay. Commissioner Mills?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Patton?
Yes, I have a quick question. With this, with the rooftop terrace dining area, I don't see in here where there is any sort of elevator or anything to get up there. By nature of this project, is it not needed for it to be ADA accessible, or am I missing
I don't actually know the specifics on that. When I saw the floor plan, I didn't see an elevator, but I would imagine that it may not be required by building code. I'd have to defer to my counterparts at Clackamas County on whether or not that's a requirement. The applicant may want to speak to elevator requirements, but I do not know. Commissioner Patton?
Okay. And then, the only other thing I will just let, I, I don't, I won't bring it up right now, but I do have some things, I do have some questions about parking, which I will wait till the end of the meeting to bring up. But other than that, I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Patton. Commissioner Hutchinson, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hee?
I was just curious about, like, the sidewalks. You said they'd have to be brought up to code. Is it just that they don't reach to the corners of the other streets, or, what's missing there?
I got, I received some comments from Jerry Nelsin at Public Works. It sounded like there were, there was some, it sounded pretty minor, some pretty minor improvements to bring the sidewalks adjacent up to ADA standards. But just, to be fair, ADA standards have changed quite a bit over time, and sometimes when, when projects were done even ten, fifteen years ago, they don't meet current standards. And that's, when I, when I was out on the project site myself, I didn't see any major issues with the sidewalks. It's probably pretty minor.
All right. Yeah, that's, I've been by their farmer's markets, and it seems up to par to me, so thank you.
Any other questions for, for staff from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Mills. I guess I, I will relay a question.
Okay.
Eric, first off, Eric, great job on the report. Thank you for the great work here. I do have a problem. I'm, I'm trying to understand the traffic analysis. I think Commissioner Patton's raised questions about the parking, and I get that concern too, but the traffic discussion, you relate to a library that's moved a couple blocks away, and somehow, this building used to be a library, so that's relevant. I don't see it as relevant at all. I don't understand how you're using that, that the fact that the library that was there is now two blocks away, and now, because of that, this does not require a traffic analysis. And maybe it doesn't. I'm not, I'm not campaigning for a traffic analysis. I think, I understand your base argument is, hey, more traffic downtown is probably a good thing. We need more people down there. And I, and I'd accept that argument, but I don't understand why you followed, went down the rabbit hole of chasing the, that the library used to be in this building as an argument for no traffic analysis.
Commissioner Mills, I think that's a fair question. The way, the way we approached this is we considered those, that library already kind of vested trips, I guess if you, if you can use that language, and that those trips were there, the building was there, and it had been generating those trips. And the replacement of this, this new use kind of absorbs those are, those trips that were happening before the library moved.
But those trips are still happening for that library. It's just two blocks away. I, I don't get that argument. I, I get that the building used to be a library, and that there were trips associated with that, but we moved the library, and those trips went with the library. So now you've got a new thing here that's going to generate trips. And I'm not, once again, I'm not trying to make, make an argument for traffic analysis, but I, I think your, your discussion, the decision to bring this up and use it as a, as a justification for no traffic analysis, I'm not buying it. So I'm not suggesting we need a traffic analysis, but I think your discussion about the library used to be here and the trips used to be here, therefore, those trips are now part of this when we know that those trips are still happening two blocks away. So I don't want to beat this to death. I think we should go on, but I wanted to bring it up.
Commissioner Mills, just one more piece to that, perhaps it might help in that discussion. Many times there are change, change of occupancy or change of uses of buildings, and we, the presumption is on those, whether that use is going from retail to service, is, staff is not requiring a traffic study for those change of uses. And so, part of the analysis here in comparison is, we see that former library activity in that building is very, being very similar to what would occur with a beer library there and not being, that the beer library essentially would be comparable to what would be there normally in that circumstance. Now, this is something that we're going through a design review process for tonight, but on a normal circumstance, where we're going to and doing, whether it's a business license, or that's kind of normally how we see things, we're not requiring a traffic study for those change of occupancies, and that's the similar analysis. I'd say also that as we move forward into our TSP update, it's not uncommon for buildings in other jurisdictions to look at things as if those trips for that building are associated with them, and they don't go away. And I understand the notion that the library moved away, but that library had its own assessment as part of where we're at now in the new library. So if that helps at all, I'm just, it's a little bit of an abstract concept, but I felt that that might be helpful.
Thank you, Don. It may be too abstract for me, but I appreciate the additional.
Abstract for me, too.
This is Jay, Chair Savory, this is Jason.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, I, the way I interpreted what was, what was presented was that when the library was the library, it was generating X number of trips per day. And that this beer library and the business that it will bring will generate no more, the likelihood of it generating more trips than what the library originally had at this building is highly unlikely. Because the building itself is not having a second story put on it, or anything of that, that nature, really, the, the volume of traffic to and from this building is, is as much or less than what the library was. So regardless of where the traffic from the library shifted when the library moved, there's no studying meant needed for this building because this building is not going to create more traffic than what was originally there. Is that a correct assumption of what was presented?
I would agree with what you just stated, Commissioner Patton.
Going along that same line of thinking, would replace a beer library with either a bicycle shop, or a, or something, any other kind of business, would that same criteria apply? I mean, I, I hadn't thought about it until Commissioner Mills brought it up, but that doesn't seem, it seems like there's a non, it's a non sequitur.
I think the burden is on the new building and not the reuse of the old building. So like, the burden for the transition in traffic is on the new library, not in the repurposed old one, because the standards had already been explored with that building. Does that make sense? Am I in the right neighborhood here?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Thank you.
Well, this is Jason. Again, I'll just throw out here, something to put on the bubble for this, is that maybe we need to put, like, as an action item, that with the evolution of the downtown, there actually needs to be a harder look at when a business changes from one use to another. So what I also got was, if, if, if someone changes the, the use of a storefront, that there is no traffic study done to see if that, that business is going to create less or more traffic. Perhaps as things develop, and this is something that was brought up, and I'm going to start beating the drum on this, is that perhaps when we start looking at the code, we need to actually build something in there where if there is a significant change in what the target demographic, or, or what that business is, that there may need to be a traffic assessment done if it goes from, say, office to retail, or something along those lines. Because that, as the downtown core actually gets built out more, that can start to become a problem. Does that make sense?
It does, and Chair, and Commissioner Patton, that will be something we'll probably be getting into some detail on, on November seventeenth during the work session.
Mr. Chair, any more comment?
Yes.
Go ahead. Yeah, I guess I'm just going to fly in the face of saying, there's no way that's the same occupancy, or traffic pattern, or parking pattern as a library. You're effectively, I don't know how these micro kitchens are going to be staffed, but if they're, as I've seen in other places, they might be independent businesses themselves, along with the brewery, along with the three shops out on the sidewalk. Each one of those will have employees and customers. That sounds like a lot more traffic to me, and people, than the library, which typically has, how many employees at the library at any one time? Fewer, I would say. And how many clients at any one time? Depending upon the time of day, perhaps more, but certainly in the evening, not nearly as many. So I don't, I'm not buying the argument that this is anything like a library. So I'll just leave it at that.
Well, Chair Savory here. I remember the discussion of, when we were talking about the, replacing the old library with the new library, and all of the different types of clientele that went to the, went to the library. A lot of that were, a lot of those folks were children. And they were, those aren't, those children, people of that age, are not be, not going to be going to the beer library at the same hours even. So I think that, I, I'm falling into Commissioner Mills' camp here. I, I don't think that they, you can compare the two at all. Once you delve into it a little deeper, different, different times of day, different, different clientele that you're counting. So I'm just saying that we should be looking at it a little, a lot differently. I, I'm not sure that we can, that we can look at that, the, the patterns as being the same, not that it's going to be any great impact, but I, I just don't see the connection from the old library to a beer library. There's, so that's all I have to say about that. Any, any other questions for the staff? Okay, let's move on to the applicant. Who will be speaking for the applicant?
I'll be speaking, Bryce Morrow.
Okay. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Yeah, Bryce Morrow, Portland, Oregon. Thank you, planning commission, for this opportunity and for this hearing. I just wanted to quickly thank the planning staff on, on the great work on this, on this, and the great overview and detailed work on the project, Eric, Don, Ryan. And, you know, quickly, I just want to note how pleased I am that the planning staff improved our self-scoring of the design review matrix by over fifteen percent. 15%, um, essentially turning a D grade into a B grade. I wish that was the case in my collegiate career, but, uh, but better late than never to, to move up that much. Um, wanted to quickly go over just a couple of questions that were raised by, uh, Commissioners. On the ADA question, uh, this, uh, project, because we are not adding, so there, there are thresholds, if it was, uh, three stories or greater, um, then it would be a trigger automatically for, uh, elevator. The, uh, the, the key thing that we'll be doing is offering an equivalent amenity. So there will be no exclusive service or amenity on the rooftop, uh, terrace. And our plan is to offer outdoor sidewalk seating that will be equivalent, much, um, like, uh, Gwen's Coffee Shop that is further down, uh, Holly Street. Um, and because this topic comes up so often early on in the design process, I, uh, ended up retaining, uh, Attorney Dennis Steinman of, uh, Kel Alderman and Runstein, just to be able to review the design over and, and make sure that our plan made sense. Um, it is also a, a, a nice benefit and, and I'm sure everyone here is familiar on this, on this call, you know, the sidewalk is nice and wide there and there was already improvement that was done, uh, within the last 10 years or so of that, uh, sidewalk intersection at Third and Holly, which is nice for ADA compliance. The, the question also for traffic impact, um, you know, it, it, using Eric's, uh, number there, 1,400 average daily trips, uh, during COVID to the library, so 46 visits daily. Uh, you know, I can only speak as my own experiences as the, the owner of Oregon City Brewing, um, and, and certainly it's a different project than, than we're proposing here, uh, in several ways, but my gosh, I'd be real happy if we could average, uh, 46 trips, uh, daily on average and certainly during a pandemic, uh, to come up with those numbers. So, you know, I don't know how, how off that is, but, um, I don't, I don't think it's dramatically off. Um, and I'll, I'll be very happy if, uh, it, uh, if that ends up being wrong by a little bit, but, but I don't think it's off, uh, dramatically. Um, yeah, but thanks staff for the, for the great overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any, uh, any questions from the Commissioners for, for the applicant? We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Mills.
Yes, um, why did you go with so many overhead doors running the sidewalk? That seems to me to be, uh, an inappropriate design for downtown commercial.
Yeah, um, uh, the transparency requirement, the glazing requirements, uh, were, were challenging for largely a C M U building. Um, and, uh, based on the cost threshold where we would be required to go into the design review, um, it ends up being a challenge of how we could add in the glazing. And I think the experience of, you know, it's a little bit different than I, I'm not it perhaps like some applicants that you would see be, before this body and that, uh, I'm the anchored tenant, the developer, but most importantly, I, I'm the, uh, brewer, owner and operator. And being in this space of food and beverage and hospitality that we're planning for this project, it, it's been just absolutely paramount to have fresh air and to have, uh, easy access to the outdoors, um, for comfort level of, uh, customers and patrons. So we, we thought it was a good solution and it allows for flexibility of use, I think, um, long-term and, uh, it, it kind of the familiarity of what we have in our Oregon City Brewery. We have, uh, two overhead doors that face out, um, and we use them extensively.
In, in what way?
Well, we use them, it, it's a little bit different operation in this one and it's easy to move materials into a production brewery. Um, so we're moving in raw ingredients, but often we'll just leave them open also for contact, um, in connection to the, to the outdoor space.
Okay. Um, any questions from, uh, from Commissioner Hutchinson?
Um, not, not many questions for me. I've, I've seen a lot of applications of those roll-up doors, um, in various, uh, urban environments and, and it pretty much does what he says. I mean, as long as, you know, you like the environment in which the, the business takes place, then those, those kinds of openings are fantastic. Your seating area can just roll right on outside and, uh, servers don't have to deal with doors. Um, and, uh, summer sure are nice here for an open seating area, so I look forward to that.
Yeah.
But, um, the only, the only real question I had is, is there, there is going to be brewing on site?
Yeah, we, we will be, well, technically this will be, yes, a brewery public house license will be for this facility because we will be, uh, we will be taking a raw material and turning into a finished product. But there will be no brew house on site, so there won't be, uh, my, my operation in Oregon City, I've, you know, have a, a boiler, we have a brew house, uh, for this facility. We'll be doing primarily, there'll be packaging, there will be, uh, eventually cider production. There will be all of our barrel aging, um, all of our barrel aging program. So it, it'll really define the space in many ways and you'll, you'll be able to look in through those large overhead door and there'll be over 200 plus, uh, um, French oak barrels. It'll be aging, um, beer, which is a bar, a large part of, of our, our program. Um, and then there'll be fermenting tanks and bright tanks, uh, for, for that barrel age program. So, um, the answer to that is technically yes, there will be brewing on site, but maybe not in a way that, uh, that, that most people are familiar with.
So no management of spent grains, I guess is kind of where I was.
Yes, it, it, that's correct. Yes, there will be no spent, spent grains, uh, for any, uh, um, farmers that might, uh, perhaps be on this call and they're looking for spent grain, that will still be at our Oregon City Brewery location.
Yeah, the cows like them because if they sit around for too long, they get, they get pretty strong.
Yes, it's gotta be moved out very quick and again, livestock level.
No further questions, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, Jason Patton, any, um, any questions?
Uh, I don't have a question, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for coming and bringing this project to us. I will show my cards here and say that I am just as excited to see this come across the Planning Commission's desk, uh, as I was to hear about it during the city council meeting. Uh, I think it is about time that something is done with this building. Uh, it is sat, it vacant for far too long and it's time to start getting some revenue from this, this piece of property into the city. Um, I also think that it is a step in the right direction for revitalizing our downtown. Uh, this is a very modern concept and I look forward to seeing what sort of, um, shot in the arm this will create for some of the other property owners here in the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Hee, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, well, I guess nothing that, uh, super relative, but is it also going to be family friendly? Like, will I be able to take my kids to dinner there?
Absolutely. Uh, so, you know, a little bit, uh, just, and I won't, uh, digress too much. I'm, uh, father of twin eight-year-old boys and when I started Oregon City Brewing, uh, seven years ago, I mean, the, the boys are, um, just little, little guys. And when I first started, we didn't have a kitchen in there. We didn't have a commercial kitchen, the O L C C regulations were different than they were now. There had to be a substantial, um, food offering to have minors on premise that has changed over time. But, uh, that was a catalyst of, of why I ended up putting in a commercial kitchen because I'm like, I'm, I'm not going to do this unless I can bring my own kids there and we can make it family friendly. So yes, I, I think that it will be, um, well, the best way, you know, I could come up with any great, uh, description of what I might do, but what I have done, um, please come down to Oregon City to bide time and you can see what we do there. It's very family-friendly atmosphere. We try to keep the hours the, the same, uh, to, to, to kind of go with that, typically closing at nine or 10 P M, seasonally adjusted. Um, but it's family-friendly, you know, we, we, it's really a community gathering place and, um, and we, and we really wanted to make it welcoming to, to all people.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Boatright, do you have any questions? Lanny, is Commissioner Boatright with us?
Commissioner Boatright is not on the call, Chair Savery.
Oh, I was told everybody was present, so, yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, so, uh, then I will, are there any other proponents that would like to speak on this matter? Carrie, do you know of any other, anybody else that's online to speak in favor of this project?
I don't believe we have any other proponents that I'm aware of, Chair Savery.
Okay, any opponents that you are aware of?
Not that I know of.
Okay, then that, anybody that would be considered neutral. In that case, I'm assuming that there is no rebuttal necessary, unless, uh, unless the applicant has something else he would like to add.
Not, not at this time.
Okay, in that case, I will close the, uh, public portion of this hearing and we will move along to the, um, uh, discussion amongst ourselves. I'm, we already heard from Commissioner Patton. Uh, Commissioner Mills, would you like to start us off with?
Sure. Your thoughts on? I guess I'm gonna start with the applicant's, uh, matrix scoring themselves as they deferred to it as a D and the staff upped them to a B and I'm gonna go with the original evaluation. It's barely a D in my view. I think staff set aside our design standards for reasons I'm not sure about, just saying the color palette is not available and I, I don't understand that statement at all. Um, having done a lot of painting and contracted a lot of painting in my time, I'm not buying that. So I don't, I think it is available. Uh, I don't like the, the building itself. The character of the building does not match what's downtown in my opinion. It's more suited to an industrial area and I think that's the, that's the vibe they're going for. They're going for a brewery vibe. Most breweries are, you know, in white industrial zones, so it doesn't fit. Uh, I don't think the garage doors, the, the glazed doors are, are advisable. I can see one maybe, but I can't see four, uh, as a designer view, and that's what this is. Uh, I'm not feeling it.
Thanks, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hutchinson, would you like to weigh in?
Um, well, I have to think in terms of the history of the building as far as whether it's appropriate to the site or not. It actually predates many of the surrounding buildings and, uh, kind of hearkens back to when Canby was running on a, on a tighter budget. Um, so, you know, I mean, but that's just, I mean, I've been here for a while and so I've seen these things change and so, you know, my opinion about that is a little bit different. I'm seeing an, an older building getting spruced up as opposed to demolished. Um, and, you know, I suppose that's neither here nor there. Um, but, you know, the city of Canby kind of is what it is and, and we've let, uh, commercial interests kind of define it. Um, as, as far as the color palette is concerned, um, I have heard it referred to, I have not seen it displayed. Um, it may just be because it has been given short shrift in the past that it was considered to not be an issue now. Um, I personally kind of, coming from an arts background, I have, I, anytime that somebody starts dictating palette to me, I, my hackles rise and that's a personal hangup of mine. Um, I think this is going to be a nice addition to downtown. It's going to improve the walkability. I think that it's going to improve, uh, a more of an evening activity vibe down there, which is lacking a little bit, but improving. Um, I'm for the project. Um, I can see how the garage doors might be an issue. Um, I've seen them applied in ways I like and I see them applied in ways that I don't. Um, there's a place in Clackamas County that's a, a beer and food cart place where both sides of it open up entirely and it essentially just turns it into a covered deck. And I'm not so fond of that. Um, you know, I think that the way that they've applied them to the building maintains the fact that it is still a building, but will open up the interior to, you know, more active traffic in and out. Um, um, as far as, um, the D goes or the B goes, they're both passing grades as far as I'm concerned. Um, so I'm, I plan to vote to approve.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hee?
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, I appreciate the fact that you are utilizing an existing building versus, uh, destroying it and, uh, using a resource that's been sitting empty for far too long. And I'm excited to see what kind of life it brings to the, uh, downtown area. So I, I will be voting to approve it.
Thank you. Um, I have, uh, going back to the, the four, four, um, bay doors, I've seen that applied, uh, in downtown Portland in a residential area at a, um, nice restaurant called The Matador or on 23rd and Pettigrove, I believe it is. And it works out very well for them. Uh, it opens the, uh, gives it a lot of open openness during the summer. It's, it's just a really nice, um, nice addition, I think. I've seen it applied down at, um, golf course in, um, Malala, uh, with the same effect. So I think, I don't have a problem with the, uh, the, the doors and I think it, I too think it will be a great addition to downtown. As someone that struggles with, um, uh, going up and downstairs, you know, uh, I, I wish that there was an elevator, um, but it's not a, a deal killer for me, but, uh, so I too will be, uh, voting in favor of, of this project. So, thank you. Okay, let's, um, any, any other comment from any other? I think I got everybody.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One follow-up. I guess I wanted to, uh, uh, give support to the, uh, effort made to reuse this building. I am a hundred percent for that. If this, if this building were using one door and, and additional glazing on the shops, I would probably be okay with it. But the fact that there are four glazed overhead doors on the, on the sidewalk room in this building, I think is unwise and for that reason I'll be abstaining.
Commissioner Mills, can I ask you why you think it's unwise? I mean, I, I.
Well, think of energy usage for one thing. These, these doors are not going to be very energy efficient in the closed position. We all talk about how great they are in the summer, but I'm gonna ask you to think about how inviting those kinds of spaces are in the winter.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but I could ask a question. Those, uh, those roll-up doors, are those, uh, I know you said that there was going to be four storefronts, right? Those roll-up doors in the individual storefronts or are those part of the main bay?
That, that's correct and that, that's really perhaps the context of this is critical. The reason why there's three overhead doors that are facing Third Street is, you know, quite frankly, this building is, uh, just shy of 11,000 square feet. Quite frankly, we don't need that for just a brewery only, um, second location. So there'll be approximately 2,700 square feet facing Third Street. There will be three different, uh, retail operations and I already have letters of intent from one will be a salon usage and one will be a, uh, retail boutique. They're both, uh, businesses that are located in Canby that are relocating. Um, so you can think about, you know, they'll each have their own independent, uh, access. So that's why you see, um, three individual man doors and then going with the overhead doors for each retail space, if that makes sense. The, the other, just, uh, to touch comment on the, on the energy value, they will have a, a U value that will, they'll meet the energy code, um, of 2014. And the, the U value, um, is better than a R value of 28 and I know. And I know this because there's a lead time, uh, we're, we're having a new one installed, um, it, at our brewery in Oregon City. It had to meet that commercial, uh, energy code requirement, and, uh, there's a long lead time. So, I've done perhaps too much research on this topic around the U value of overhead doors, but it will be substantial, substantially more than the walls will be or the ceiling, the R value.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Mills, do you have any follow-up with that? Apparently not. Um, thank you very much. Uh, we will now entertain, um, are there any further questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, so, uh, let's, um, move ahead, and I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, DR 21-06, the Canby Beer Library and the associated conditions of approval.
So moved.
Uh, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the ayes have it, and we will be looking forward to the Canby Beer Library at some point. So, thank you very much, and, um, we'll move along to the next, next item.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate your time.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Bryce. Um, we will now move along to the Tofti South Annexation Zone Change, ANN 21-01, uh, backslash ZC 21-02. Uh, this is to consider a request to annex approximately 42.5 acres of land into the city limits of Canby. And as part of the annexation request, the applicant is concurrently requesting the approval of a Development Concept Plan, DCP, and a zone change to establish zoning for the proposed annexation land that is consistent with the, uh, Canby Comprehensive Plan. So, this, um, the matter before us presently requires a, uh, public hearing. All interested persons shall be heard on the matter. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. It may be limited by time for your presentation. The applicant will have a total of 15 minutes to speak. The proponents will be allowed five minutes each, and the opponents will be allowed five minutes each. Those that think of themselves as being neutral on the matter will have five minutes, and the applicant will then have 10 minutes for a rebuttal. All questions must be directed through the chair. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria contained in the staff report, the comprehensive plan, or other land use regulations which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. At this time, I would ask that any member of the hearing body who has had, who has a conflict of interest, please indicate the nature and extent of the conflict, and whether you intend to participate in or abstain from hearing the present matter. Okay? Uh, also, if any member of the hearing body has had any experte contact with anyone prior to this hearing, including a visit to the site, please declare the nature and extent of the contact at this time. Okay. Um, the public hearing will be conducted as follows. First, we'll have a staff report. Will that be you again, Eric?
Yes, it will be, that's for sure.
Great, thank you. Uh, then we will have questions by the hearing body, and then we will open, um, the hearing for public testimony. First, the applicant, and he will have, uh, not more than 15 minutes. Other proponents, not more than five minutes each. Opponents, not more than five minutes each. And rebuttal, if necessary, by the applicant, not more than 10 minutes. At that time, we will close the public testimony. Questions, if any, by, by the commissioners, and then discussion and a decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date that you will receive. Any questions? Okay, Eric, the floor once again is all about you.
Right. So, we're gonna have, um, a little bit different type of a project. This is a public hearing for, as you mentioned, an annexation, and then a concurrent zone change and development concept plan. Um, we colloquially have been calling it Tofti South. This is a Type IV application. Um, and your charge here is to review their, the criteria and make a recommendation to City Council. I'm gonna speak briefly about the process here. Um, so, the process of annexation zone change generally follows this procedure. And this is since we have multiple land use applications that form a single unified development proposal. And again, we call this Tofti South, that's staff, that's staff's, um, description. First, I wanna mention, mention that an annexation and zone change is not a proposal for development itself. Um, the proposal is, is to annex land into the corporate limits of the city of Canby, and then to establish city zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan. The first step is to hear of these items, um, at a public hearing at Planning Commission. Then, the next step would be to forward on a recommendation to City Council. City Council then has another public hearing, and if approved, they will have a second reading of the ordinance in order to formally adopt and include the annexed land with rezon designations. And then ultimately, if approved at council, the, uh, project needs to pass an appeal, appeal period before the land use decision becomes final. So, uh, first, talk about the subject property itself. On the right-hand side, you can see the general bounds of the annexation area. It includes, uh, three tax lots, tax lot 1,200, 1,300, and 2,300, which you can see on your map, two of which have site, uh, addresses, and one, um, does not. Currently, these properties are zone Clackamas County Exclusive Farm Use. You can note that tax lot 2,300 has significant fringe along Malala River, the Malala River, and then, um, to the north, there's fringes on Southeast 16th Avenue and 17th Avenue, and to the west, South Ivy Street. This is a, uh, survey of the tract that's proposed from, for annexation. This is from the applicant's, uh, applicant team, their survey of the actual bounds of the property, and its legal descrip- legal description. This is, uh, images on the left comes from Clackamas County zoning map. Again, you can see that these properties are currently zoned, uh, Clackamas County Exclusive Farm Use. And then on the right, you have, um, the city of Canby's comprehensive plan designation. So, we have these designated in our comprehensive plan, but they haven't been zoned because they're not part of the city yet. Um, the comprehensive plan calls for the majority of the property in that beige-ish color to be low-density residential. The yellowish color to the top left is medium-density residential. These are the, our approval criteria when, uh, considering an annexation and zone change. Again, we have general provisions in 1608. 1616 and 1618 are the R1 and R1.5, uh, residential zones. 1654 speaks to the amendments to the zoning map. 1684 is the annexation criteria. And also, we have, um, the implementing state law, which is ORS 222. And then we have the general standards and application review procedures found in 1688 and 1689. I'm gonna speak first to the zone change component, and this is a request to rezone the subject properties from Exclusive Farm Use to city of Canby R1 Low Density Residential and R1.5 Medium Density Residential. So, the zoning map amendment criteria are found, uh, primarily in 16, Canby Municipal Code 1654, and there are some specific criteria that are found under Sub 40A. The first statement states that the comprehensive plan of the city should be given special attention, and especially Policy 6, which is the land use element and implementation measures found therein, and the plans and policies of the county, state, and local districts in order to preserve functions and local aspects of land conservation and development. Um, important to note here that the zoning map amendment request here is not an up-zone. It's not a down-zone, and it's not a reclassification of use districts. So, what's happening here is we're not, they're not, the applicant is not asking for an industrial use when, uh, residential use was contemplated by the comprehensive plan. The request is to rezone these properties consistent with the comprehensive plan map designations, which are indicated in the Department of Land Conservation Development acknowledged comprehensive plan of the city. So, Policy 6, which I read earlier, is a land use element in a comprehensive plan that directs the reader to areas of special concern, and they, these are identified with letters like A, B, C, D. And, um, this area of Canby does not have any of those identified areas of special concern, so it's, it's not an applicable consideration when reviewing the zone change criteria. Again, um, current zoning to your left, Exclusive Farm Use, Clackamas County. Proposed zone, proposed zoning is Ca- city of Canby R1 Low Density and R1.5 Medium Density Residential. If you recall that previous image, these requested zone clas- reclassifications are consistent with the Camp, Canby Comprehensive Plan map underlying designation. So, no changes to the, what was envisioned in the comprehensive plan. The next statement is Sub B, and it states that whether there are all required public facilities and service that will exist or will be provided concurrent with development to adequately need the need, meet the needs of any use or development which would be permitted by the new zoning designation. Um, as you'll see, as I, as you probably saw in my staff report and also in this presentation, there's, there's some significant overlay between the zone change criteria and the annexation and development concept plan criteria. I'm gonna talk about some of that, uh, in much greater detail later. But at this point, staff had not identified any known deficiencies in services or facilities that would serve future development. We did have a, uh, pre-application conference with the applicant, a number of utility providers, city engineer, Public Works Department, and, um, there was a detailed discussion about the provision of public utilities and whether or not they were adequate for this, any future development. There were known, uh, no, known deficiencies indicated in that, in that process. Staff also, um, sent public comment requests and agency comment requests about this project and did not receive any indication that this area would be deficient or unable to provide for necessary public facilities and services. Um, so this is a bit lengthy. Again, uh, not a real easy way to, to limit text here, but, um, this criteria, Sub 60, speaks to, again, public facilities and whether they will be available or exist or provide concurrently with development in an action for an application of zone change. And what this states is that the Planning Commission, if they find it necessary, could recommend to City Council to impose additional conditions about requirements for public facilities, and that those conditions should be limited to improvements or physical changes to the property which are directly related to health, safety, and general wel- general welfare. And also that those conditions, um, be limited to improvements which relate only to the proposed area and its zone change. And 1, 2, and 3 are examples stated in the code that would be, uh, potential impositions that could be required by the Planning Commission. The, uh, reality is that with an annexation and zone change, there's likely to be a further development application in the future. Um, generally, that in this instance, that would be something like a subdivision in which all of these public improvements would be, uh, discussed in great detail and would generally be requirements as part of the development itself. I think this code criteria was included for unusual circumstances that may necessitate some kind of extra layer of protection for the city when providing, uh, bringing in new land or rezoning property. It's staff's opinion that it's not really warranted in this instance to impose these types of conditions for a zone change. Staff fi- find that the proposed zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan map. There's no identified deficiencies that exist that would be concerning for the Planning Commission. And accordingly, staff suggested the Planning Commission forward on a recommendation of approval to rezone the annexation area property to be consistent with the underlying comprehensive plan map designations. I'm gonna switch gears a bit. Um, but, uh, again, these are concurrent applications fairly common with the annexation. So, the second component is the annexation itself, and this is a proposal by the applicant to annex approximately 42.5 acres of land into the city limits of Canby. So, what you have here on the left-hand, uh, left-hand side of your screen is the city of Canby's annexation development map. This is in our code. The red bordered areas are ident- identified as land that requires a development concept plan. And in this instance, the subject properties are within that area that requires a development concept plan with the annexation. I'm gonna dive into the annexation criteria, um, and specifically related to the development concept plan component, which is found in Canby Municipal Code 1684, Sub 40. So, broadly speaking, the onus is on the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed annexation, annexation area will be able to provide adequate infrastructure. And adequate infrastructure in our code include water, sewer, stormwater, roads, multi-mo- roads and multimodal transportation, fire and emergency standards, and parks or in-lum payments of parks. This, um, the applicant has provided, uh, a wealth of information about the infrastructure. And, um, we had a number of completeness review, uh, back and forth with the applicant to bolster their application. They also provided us some pretty detailed information about geotechnical analysis of the soils and stability of the, of the properties, a wetland report that was consistent with the Department of State land requirements, and then also some floodplain mapping. A lot of this is related to the Malala, the interface with the Malala area. But, um, I think in general went above and beyond in providing, information about adequacy of infrastructure and the provision thereof. So, the first image you have here is, these are provided by the- So the first image you have here, these are provided by the applicant. This is a conceptual water infrastructure plan, generally proposing where consensual water lines may lie within the area. Again, backing up a bit, it's important to note that this is not, you know, this isn't a development proposal, and this is not exactly how it may end up, but merely is trying to demonstrate that there is a logical plan for the provision of public infrastructure. And you're going to see this in a variety of ways in which the applicant has shown staff and the planning commission how essential public infrastructure can be provided for. Also, these dashlines basically indicate a separate property that's not part of the annexation area, but they did, in a way, shadow plat how those properties could also have essential public infrastructure. Again, not written in stone, but conceptually demonstrating that it could work. This is the applicant's more general, I guess you'd call, kind of like a title sheet of the development concept plan area. You could see public road infrastructure, potential pedestrian pathway along the Mulala River Bluff area, which would be a continuation of the Emerald Necklace Trail. And then some general breakdowns of where roads would lie, pedestrian potential connections, and the division of R1 and R1.5 land. The next image you have here is the conceptual storm infrastructure plan that the applicant provided, showing generally how stormwater would be collected and treated on the properties. There's some special consideration for setback distances and proximities to the Mulala River, and I believe that came from the geotechnical study that the applicant commissioned for this project. They could probably speak to that in a little greater detail if needed. This is a conceptual sewer infrastructure plan with grading. There was some, and this is mentioned in the staff report, there was some back and forth about whether or not the sewer infrastructure would be able to basically drain towards the South Ivy Street pump station. And because of some physical constraints, it's staff's understanding that the direction was to move the gravity feed towards southeast 16th and 17th. And as a result of that, it will require some non-structural fill to accommodate that. We staff vetted this with Curran McLeod, the city's consulting engineer. They believed it was appropriate and acceptable, and that communication is in the staff report, which is one of the exhibits off the top of my head. This is a map of the existing conditions on the property. Again, this is from the applicant. Shows good detail of a conservative floodplain line, base flood elevation, blue line, and then a survey of the top of Bluff along the Mulala River. You could see that the vast majority of the remainder of the property is quite flat and was previously in agricultural uses. So part of the development concept plan also requires an analysis for the need of additional property within city limits. And that analysis requires the amount of, an analysis of the amount of developable land within the same class of zoning. So in this case, that's going to be low-density and medium-density residential that are currently within the city limits. An approximation of the rate of development for that land, and then how this project, the proposed annexation, will affect the supply of developable land within the city limits. And the code states that a supply of developable land that basically balances an anticipated population growth over the following three years is considered to be sufficient. Staff evaluated the applicant's conservative analysis of the amount of available developable land and found that the additional supply will adequately contribute to a deficit of developable R1 and R1.5 land. The applicant did include some, I would say, fairly marginal and difficult to redevelop land, which is why I say it's conservative. I think that's probably a good way to run your data to include it, but some of those properties would be quite challenging or constrained in order to be considered a real supply to the city. And those findings are found on page 25 and 26 of the staff report and also Figure 8. 1684 Sub 40 Sub 3 requires a statement of the potential physical and aesthetic, physical, aesthetic, and related social effects of the proposed development on the community as a whole and on the neighborhood of which it will become part. And then any proposed actions or changes that the applicant would use to mitigate identified concerns, if any. Then a neighborhood meeting is required as per the ordinance. And I mentioned this previously a bit before, but the applicant was responsive to staff's request to provide detailed information related to the Mulala River interface area. And I think that that goes a large, you know, goes quite a ways about basically bringing to the open and stating clearly what any potential physical effects are with the properties. And as I mentioned, they provided a wetland report that appears to be conducted consistent with Department of State lands DSL standards, a geotech analysis, existing condition surveys, and other material which really provide a good lay of the land and the physical conditions of the property. And some of these could be considered ancillary, aesthetic, and social contributions. And the applicant also conducted, as required, a neighborhood meeting on May 25, 2021 at 6:00 PM, consistent with the code requirements. And information about that is detailed as an exhibit in the staff report. So 1684 Sub 40 Sub 4, this is where I mentioned there's some overlap between zone change criteria and annexation criteria, but it requires a statement of the availability, capacity, and status of existing water, sewer, drainage, transportation, park, and school facilities. And the applicant provided staff with conceptual plans, which you just saw on our PowerPoint, related to the infrastructure in both annexation area. And they provided a general conceptual framework for how infrastructure will work on the property. As I had mentioned before, through conversations with other city agencies, Public Works, utility providers, there was no known deficiencies identified. And then park facilities are reviewed and analyzed according to the Canby Municipal Code 16120. And that's done in coordination with city staff, the applicant, the parks advisory board, and then ultimately approval by this body at a later date through a subdivision project. And then for the transportation component, as required by the transportation planning role, which is found in the Oregon Administrative Rules, a memorandum addressing the zone change and the annexation was completed by DKS, the city's, one of the city's traffic consultants. And that's found in Exhibit D. That information found that the zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and there were no identified issues as part of this. The next sections, 1684 Sub 40 Sub 5, is a statement of increased demand for such facilities to be generated by the proposed development, if any, at this time. Again, increased demand on facilities such as water, sewer, power were vetted during pre-application meetings and city staff and partner agencies. And there were no known deficiencies that exist. We didn't hear from Public Works wastewater treatment plant or Canby Utility provides water and power that this annexation land area was going to create a demand and supply issue on the public infrastructure. And then at a later day, a detailed traffic study would be required for any subdivision. And that's going to dive into the details about impacts to the adjacent and extending road network. And it will evaluate demands on the road network as part of any future development. The next component is Sub 40 Sub 6. And there's a statement of additional facilities, if any, required to meet the increased demand in any proposed phasing of such facilities in accordance with projected demand. So again, there's no additional facilities that have been identified to meet increased demand beyond what's typically reviewed in a land division project, which this body sees frequently. There are existing plans already contemplated for a roundabout on South Ivy Street. I believe we now have two quarters of the dedicated land for the roundabout in this annexation area. And future development would be three quarters, so three out of the four dedicated right-of-way areas to build a roundabout. Then also, the South Ivy pump station, which is pretty close to this project across the street on South Ivy, was recently completed to provide additional capacity for sewer systems and residential areas on the south part of Canby. Sub 40 Sub 7 is a statement outlining the method and source of financing required to provide additional facilities. So had additional facilities been identified in this process to meet increased demand, they would be identified here for you to consider now. There were none. Should additional facilities be required in a future land division project, that financing would be discussed in greater detail. And generally speaking, much of that burden falls upon the private developer applicant to bolster those facilities or public improvements, but at this stage, there's nothing identified, so there's no real reason to make a statement about method and sources of financing. This Sub 40 Sub 8 talks about, it loops you back to zoning and text, map, text and map amendments that would be required to complete the development concept plan and annexation, and that the proposed zoning must be consistent with the zoning identified in the development concept plan. So as I mentioned, the applicant is requesting a current zone change with this proposal. And those zoning districts are exactly concurrent with the comprehensive plan map designation. So no special considerations to consider with this annexation. And then, I believe this is the last, Sub 40 Sub 9, is a requirement to be compliant with all of the other applicable city ordinances or policies. And at this time, staff finds that the applicant has been compliant with other relevant city ordinances and policies, and these are discussed in greater detail in the staff report. Sub 40 Sub 10 speaks to compliance with this application and the ORS, Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 222, which is language directly related to annexation procedures. And in this instance, the applicant is consistent with the regulations stated in ORS 222, specifically that the annexation must be submitted by all owners of the land in the annexed territory. So everybody that is being annexed needs to be in agreement with moving forward. That the annexation territory itself needs to be within the urban growth boundary of the city or metro. We're not in metro, and the entirety of this property is in the urban growth boundary. And the next requirement is at least one parcel in the annexation territory must be contiguous to city limits. And there is definitely contiguous properties to city limits. And then lastly, that the proposal must conform to all of the City of Canby's requirements These are kind of procedurally procedural-related criteria. And Sub 50 Sub B states that the planning commission is required to do what we're doing today, to have a public hearing to evaluate the proposed annexation, and then to determine what the appropriate zoning designation should be. So again, the applicant's asking for an annexation. They're wanting these properties to be rezoned consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then at the end of this meeting, the criteria say that the planning commission shall forward on a recommendation concerning this project, and that the financial specify how this project has or has not complied with the review criteria. I'm going to get into some public comments. First, I had mentioned this before, we did receive comments from the city engineer, and that was based on the conceptual sewer plan and whether or not what the applicant has proposed conceptually for sewer is going to work. And that attachment demonstrates that the city engineer is on board with the sewer plan as described. We did, I also want to mention that we did, in a previous iteration of this project, we did receive some comments. And I believe there's probably some members of the public that are here today perhaps to speak on that matter. But because we didn't receive comments directly related to this proposal, and quite a bit of time has gone by, it really was not, staff didn't believe it was appropriate to include those comments as part of this proposal. Separate projects, different applicant, different representatives. That being said, I think the applicant addressed a lot of that in their statements related to the interface with the Mulala River, with the wetland report, the geotech analysis, and some of the other existing conditions evaluations. So we did receive a number of public comments. Some of them were received prior to the creation of the staff report, and then others came in slightly afterwards. First one was from Chan Beals, who expressed interest in the rezone process and whether or not there was a down-zone proposal. Next came from Brian Hutchins, expressed interest in southeast 16th Avenue widening and road alignments. Dorothy Neizer expressed some concern about construction traffic impacts and potential impacts to emergency services, and requested speed bumps on southeast 16th. Patricia Swanson indicated some concern about traffic on southeast 16th Avenue in the Denzmore State subdivision area and did not want multifamily homes. Let us pattern here. Randy and Wendy Watson indicated some concern on traffic on Randy and Wendy Watson indicated some concern on traffic on southeast Sixteenth Ave. for construction, working hours on development, the roundabout, alignment of public roads, and then indicated some concern about the current speed limit on South Ivy Street, and suggested that a reduction is warranted. And then a comment that was received after the creation of the staff report from James Gadberry, who expressed concern about the speed limit on South Ivy, and some indication that there are some potential negative impacts from street trees. Also mentioned, the applicant provided a response to these public comments, which was attached as an exhibit to the staff report. So a lot of texts there, and a lot of information. But at this point, based on the application submitted from the applicant and staff's facts, finding, and conclusion analysis, it's planning staff's stance that the planning commission should make a motion to recommend approval to the city council on this application, Annexation 2101, Zone Change 2102. And that's going to be subject to the identified conditions of approval. And with that, I am finished with my portion of the staff report. I'm happy to answer questions as I can.
Thank you, Eric. That was a thorough, pretty thorough and comprehensive presentation. Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Mills. Do you have any questions for Eric?
No, I just want to thank Eric for the excellent report. He kind of laid it all out. The concerns are there and how they're being addressed. I have no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Patton.
I have a question on, as far as the street here, was there any sort of, and this might not be the right place for this, so stop me if I'm in the wrong area, but as far as connecting Sixteenth Avenue and Seventeenth Avenue?
Yeah, that was discussed in the pre-application conference. And if I'm recalling this correctly, and the applicant may speak to this, is that the intention there was to avoid a kind of a raceway effect, where you have a very long linear section of street, where people tend to kind of accelerate, pass through there. And I'm trying to pull up the applicant's mittel. Again, also Commissioner Patton, these are conceptual in nature, so it could change. You know, when, if and when later on, a subdivision comes in, I think we'll probably dive into greater detail on road alignment and what makes sense and what doesn't. At this stage, staff found that the way that roads have been laid out appear logical and supported by our code. And beyond that, I would probably ask the applicant to speak whether or not, or why they chose that particular alignment versus what they have, versus a connection. Does that answer your question? Maybe?
I mute myself. Done. Then I mute myself. Um, what I, yeah, so I guess what I can do is I can, I'll, because this is just sort of like a, you know, pencil drawing of what this could possibly look like, I'll, I guess I'll just hold off until we get to more of a discussion portion of, you know, things that I would like to see as far as when this comes across our desk, if that makes sense.
Yep, that sure does.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Hi, thank you. I was noticing that along where the property goes near the river, there's an offset that, oh, for the riparian area that the city mandates. Is that from the high watermark?
Yes. It's high watermark and associated wetland area, which is part and parcel to why staff wanted a little more information on what wetlands were present in that area. And we did receive that from the applicant. They had, did a wetland report that was part of their mittel.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. So the park extension, as we call it, the Emerald Necklace, I guess, that's at this point hypothetical. But it's part of Canby's plan to continue that. How much of that would be up to, oh, I'm guessing, I know that they can make in-kind payments to the park system in lieu of providing parks. Is that something that would, that you think would be likely?
What I can tell you is the staff's position, which is also strongly supported by a number of planning documents, that the Emerald Necklace is something that we would pretty strongly advocate for a requirement as a future, as part of this project and any future land division. And that mostly lives in the, part of the reasoning there is some plans, one of them is the Parks and Open Area Acquisition Plan, the Parks Master Plan, which is currently being updated. And also that we have required two fairly close and adjacent projects, Ivy Ridge and Beck Pond, to contribute to that Emerald Necklace. So this would be a continuation of that.
Effectively increasing the riparian zone, except for all the jogging sneakers.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Heath, any questions or comments?
Yeah, well, I was going to ask kind of about that walking trail also, that's the Emerald Necklace or whatnot. And, yeah, is that going to just, is that going to count towards their contribution to the city's total parks, basically, like instead of the in lieu of payments?
We haven't really gotten down to those level of details yet, but I suspect there will be a number of negotiations and back and forth and consult with a variety of folks. One is the Parks Advisory Board, the Parks Department, and Public Works about what we believe is appropriate for the dedication, and whether that's a combination of dedications and cash in lieu. We're not, we're not quite there yet, but this, this segment is, has been identified in our planning documents to be pretty important, and it's a continuation of other dedications. So I know that the applicant also, conceptually, has proposed another park, more of like in the mold of a neighborhood park inside the subdivision. And our Code 16120 speaks to basically how we evaluate dedications or whether or not a cash in lieu is more appropriate. But at this stage, it's fairly conceptual, so I don't, I couldn't tell you for sure.
All right. Yeah, and you mentioned making the walking trail a requirement, and I would be in favor of making that a condition of approval, because I used to play on that stretch of river as a kid, and I, I don't know, it's kind of nostalgic for me. I'd still like to be able to have access to the rivers.
That's, that's kind of the plan, was the Emerald Necklace. So I, you know, I'm glad to hear that.
I have, I have a couple of questions. I have the letter here from Jean Dahlquist. She was with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And she was talking about, we will be reviewing Goal Ten. Can you tell me what Goal Ten is that she was referring to?
Yeah, so the fair, Goal Ten is related to housing, and it's one of the statewide planning goals. The Fair Housing Council was specifically involved in this project, and I think they're interested in a lot of projects like this, where there's an annexation and a rezon. I think, I spoke to them, and I think their concerns were that somehow this was going to be a downzone type of situation, where we were going to lower the density requirement. And after I spoke with them and they saw my staff report, they didn't have any additional feedback, nor did they want to participate in the hearing. So I don't, I think it's kind of a moot point at this stage.
Because they're, from what I understand, they're wanting to go with a R1 and R1.5, is that about?
Yes. The others, and since they, so you would, a Goal Ten analysis would be necessary if this was, the project was proposing a zoning that was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. We would need to, staff and the applicant would need to explain why that works. And you got, and this body has some familiarity with that recently, with the Hemmerling Project.
Right, right. My other question, it's more of a curiosity than anything else, is I've lived in this area for almost thirty, well, actually, almost forty-seven years. And one of the things that I know about the Malala River is that it is a meandering river. If you saw the history of the Malala, where it has been and where it is currently, it's all over the place. So I'm concerned that no one is really thinking about what, where that river is, what could happen if that river eroded that, that area. And it, and it could very easily, particularly if we had another flood experience like we had, you know, what, fifteen years ago or something like that, and the Hundred Year floods. So the Pudding River, Willamette River, and the Malala River all kind of come together, and things get backed up, particularly because it is a meandering river. Have you given that any thought? I mean, how that could affect this project, that the river itself, it's an undammed river, so you really can't control that.
Right. Yeah, it's, it is a wild river. It has no flood control. There is definitely significant evidence that it's jumped its banks and changed its course. And staff has put thought into that. That was part, partly why we wanted some additional information from the applicant. We wanted to see currently what the floodplain levels are, floodplain mapping, also the geotechnical analysis, and some more information about the existing conditions. I think also from that geotech analysis, there is a pretty large setback from anything near the actual bluff itself. I think we will get into that in greater detail in a subdivision, but I think, at least for an annexation report, I believe the applicant has put a lot of information and cards on the table related to the Malala River. And I don't think in any, I think as staff, we've tried to put, shine a light on that to the greatest extent possible. I think it is a concern. It's definitely a legitimate concern, Chair Savory.
All right, well, I'll be real interested to see how that, that plays out going along. Any more questions for Eric, or from going forward, before we move on to the applicant? Okay, let's, let's hear from the applicant then. Who is going to be speaking for this project?
There's, there's several of us. This is Dan Polish. Mimi, are you starting it off, or would you like me to start?
I am. I couldn't find my mute button. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of Polish Homes. We are very excited to be here this evening. We do have our full development team. So we have Dan Polish and Jerry Jones from Polish Homes. As I said, I'm Mimi Dukas from AKS. I'm joined by Paul Selke and Marie Holliday. And then we also have our legal counsel, Mike Robinson, here as well. This, I did appreciate staff's detailed review on the technical background, the criteria. We've provided a lot of information to staff, and we appreciate that they support what we've provided to them. So we're going to try and spend some more time on the design itself and the whys behind it. And Polish wants to talk about who they are as a developer and what they're going to bring to the community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dan Polish. Dan?
Thanks, Mimi. And Eric, great presentation, very thorough and impressive. We sit in a lot of these. And thank you, Chair Savory, and the rest of the Commissioners, and everybody on the call. I'm going to, truthfully, I'm going to go off script just a little bit. Jerry Jones, our Director of Land Development, is going to follow me here and get into the technicalities, specifically addressing, you know, some of these conversations that have come up while Eric was speaking. Dennis Polish, who's my father, had hoped to be on this call. This project, I mean, as a developer, you guys have to understand, especially with the volume that we do, every project is special in its, in its own right. This one particularly, because back in the 1990s, as many of you are aware, we worked in Canby. I was in high school at the time. And my dad's business partner passed away tragically while kind of on their last adventure together, hunting in another state east of us. But anyways, and so Dennis had hoped to be on the call. He couldn't, so I was honored to take his place and just tell you guys that this team, this takes this project and the opportunity to work with Mr. Tofti again, and adjacent to a community that we developed quite a while back, is just a very special thing. When you kind of get into the daily grind of what you do, and you come along a project like this, it's just neat. I don't really know how else to express that, especially over, you know, the Zoom call here. So we've, we're naming this Mark's Place at Tofti Farms. And I know that development's tough. We're going to, we're going to go through a lot of the questions that have come up and concerns from the neighbors. And at the same time, it's just such a heightened time of sensitivity regarding just housing stock and supply. We are a community developer. We do care about Canby. I grew up in the Wilsonville Westland area, and we're just very proud to be back. And so while I'm not in the day-to-day of our land development team, I was just very happy to be able to just address you guys and let you hear from this, this team. I think they've done a great job of getting prepared. And so, again, thank you so much. Jerry, I'll hand it over to you, but I'll stay on here in case anything comes up.
Hey, thanks, Dan. Good evening, Commissioners. We certainly appreciate all the time that you spend volunteering for very important meetings like this to continue the growth of your city there in Canby. As Dan said, my name is Jerry Jones. I get to lead our land development team here at Polish Homes. And I just wanted to quickly introduce you to who Polish is as a local hometown developer. We operate with three offices in three different regions, all within the Northwest. We have an office in Bend, which is where our headquarters is. We have an office in Tri-Cities that services southeast Washington. And then we have an office right there in Tuolton that services what's our Portland metro area, and that expands anywhere from Ridgefield to the north and Salem to the south. Our total homes built annually is about in the 600 range, and that's the combination of these regions. And we build a couple different types of products, anywhere from attached townhomes to the larger detached single-family homes that we're targeting here in Canby. We like to offer the idea of what we call a complete community whenever it's possible. This means it's with super heightened attention, not just to quality homes, but to a good mix of various living options, and then to a very thoughtful and professional-maintained open spaces. Parks, trails, and neighboring gathering spaces are really important to us. And we're very proud to get raving reviews on the communities that we've done throughout the Northwest. If you wanted to see maybe a recent example of how we provide these in Portland area, if you were to look to our Rosedale Parks or our Butternut Creek Master Plans in Hillsborough, they show, there's some pictures on the screen here. They show our attention to what a community could look like. And since we can't do this all on our own, we're blessed with the opportunity to work with with the opportunity to work with such professional development team and, and top-notch consultants, uh, such as APS, who is presenting, uh, here with us tonight. And I wanted to, um, just reaffirm that Polish is very excited about Canby, as Dan said, and not just the history from decades ago, but we feel it's, it's really right in our wheelhouse of the homes that we can offer in a community we can really support, uh, take care of and be proud. In fact, I just want to mention, we have several employees that are, are very thrilled about the potential opportunity to live in a Polish home in the city of Canby. I'd like to mention, uh, here that the planning staff, uh, engineering staff, as well as public works have just been great to work with on this annexation application. And we look forward to continuing to, uh, have a really cohesive working relationship as we move this project towards more of a development application. And I as well will be here available, uh, throughout the hearing, uh, just to, to provide any feedback to any questions that you may have, uh, as we kick this off to AKS to give our presentation. So, uh, Mimi, thanks for the opportunity to do the introduction with Dan, and I will kick it off to you.
Thanks, Jerry. Um, so again, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna try to not repeat, um, what you've already heard in the staff report. This is the subject site. I think you're pretty familiar with that. We've got the three applications. We've got the foundational annexation application bundled with a zone change and a development concept plan. So zooming in, uh, the property is about 42 and a half acres, located south of 13th, east of Ivy, west of Redwood, and north of the Malala River. When I say south of 13th, that's a general location. It's really adjacent to 16th and 17th. Um, this shows relationship to, um, some of the other, um, neighborhood amenities, including the legacy park complex, shows the urban growth boundary, relationship with Hope Village and, uh, the Malala River. Here are the acreages. Uh, one thing I do want to point out with this screen is that, um, for tax lot 2300, the large parcel on the east side of the project, uh, that tax lot extends further to the south on the other side of the Malala River. Uh, we are only annexing the land that is, or proposing to annex the land that is within the urban growth boundary. So it will stop at the bank of the Malala River. Um, and a subsequent land division will create a parcel line along that boundary. Staff went through the annexation criteria. Fundamentally, annexation is about serviceability with infrastructure. It's about adjacency to the existing city limits, and it is about, uh, willing applicant. You have all of those in this case. Uh, city of Canby has chosen to add criteria to that foundational component. And you see that through the DCP, which really talks about, uh, some of the design components that go into it. You also have the, um, needs projection, uh, the three-year, making sure that this land is actually needed and will, will reasonably be expected to build out within a three-year timeframe. We've provided that information and we've provided the DCP. Um, the DCP does give you a general sense of what we envision for the property, so we are happy to go through that with you. Staff talked about the zone change. The zone change is really application of the zones that are anticipated by the comprehensive plan. There's really, we're not, um, fighting against the comprehensive plan. This is just implementation of it. So we've got the low-density residential and medium-density residential comprehensive plan designations. Those are implemented through your ordinance with the R1 and R1.5 zones. And that's what we are proposing in this area. Right now, there's no zoning on the property. We are proposing to, um, apply the comprehensive plan implementation. The development concept plan is really about making, showing, uh, the public how the infrastructure can be reasonably extended to the site and making sure that it is a thoughtful, um, addition to your community and that that infrastructure makes sense for both the existing community and for remaining lands. Um, these are the criteria. The general topic areas in front of you, we'll go through that a little bit. This is our development concept plan. Uh, as I said, I want to talk a little bit more about the design than, than staff dove into, um, because we talk about the intent of what we're trying to achieve with the development concept plan. There were questions about 16th and 17th Street. Actually, there's quite a few questions about transportation, so I'm going to talk about that, um, pretty extensively. Um, 16th and 17th Street were, um, constructed with development to the north, and those are essentially three-quarter street improvements. So they're partial street improvements, and it's expected when development to the south moves forward that they will finish those road improvements. We did some early, Polish did some early outreach with the community to the north, and we heard that they did not want those two streets connected. Um, it, it creates , uh, additional transportation along that east-west corridor. Um, and we respect that. It changes the character of their neighborhood. Um, what we decided to propose instead is a east-west connection internal to our site. You can see that with essentially what we refer to as 18th Street coming off of the future roundabout into our site. Um, we did not make that a continuous east-west street over to Redwood. Um, as staff alluded, that can really turn into a raceway if you have long straightaway sections. We've got east-west connectivity. There's a little bit of jog in the roadway that, that breaks it up. It creates turn movements. People are more deliberate with how they drive, and they're more sensitive to the pedestrians who are part of the community. What we wanted to do as that 18th Street comes into the community off of Ivy, um, you have that view corridor into the neighborhood park. So this is a pocket park. It'll be, uh, owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. That is a hallmark of the, uh, Polish communities. Um, those are real amenity. It's part of what makes Polish communities special. Um, and we like it to be a real, um, arrival, uh, feature. So 18th Street comes into that, into that, uh, park facility, and then traffic can splinter out off of there. We're trying to disperse the traffic and make sure that we don't get it all concentrated in any particular place. There are concerns that we've heard that people, that, um, neighbors do not want 16th Street to be the primary access into this new community. And it's not intended to be really. 18th Street is going to be where the monument signs are located. Uh, it's where the primary entrance is expected to be and where construction will take access, um, during that construction period. I also want to point out, the roundabout is really a future facility. Um, it's talked about, it's desired, um, but the right-of-way is not existing on the, all four corners. In fact, we will create the first right-of-way dedication on our corner. Um, and then we'll have to wait for other developments to dedicate their corners. Um, once that right-of-way is all available, then a roundabout can be built. Um, building a quarter of a roundabout is not very functional. Um, but in the interim, 18th Street will have a full connection over to Ivy. Um, so that will be fully functional at the very beginning of the project. Um, and as I said, that will be the signed primary entrance. So we have the neighborhood park. We've got connections to those two cul-de-sac bulbs to make sure that pedestrians have good connectivity, even if the vehicles are not, um, able to go directly through. And we have the Emerald Necklace, as you can see, along the Malala River. Uh, we are expecting a trail along there. Um, that is within your plans. Uh, it's in, within your development code. Um, so that will happen. Um, we, uh, have analyzed that with our geotechnical analysis. We know what kind of setbacks are, excuse me, the setbacks that are needed to make sure that we've got a safe community for both Polish Homes and for the city of Canby. Um, so that documentation is within the application tonight, and we'll, um, provide that documentation again with the subdivision application when it comes forward with more detail. Um, no lots are located within, uh, the grading sensitivity area identified by the, um, geotechnical report. Um, the chair did talk about the meandering Malala River. We did look at that, and we had our geotechnical team look at that. Um, most of the meandering, all of the meandering really happens to the south. This bluff is a hard edge to where the river can go. Um, and it is, the bluff is very hard material, um, fundamentally. Um, there's been small sloughs here or there, but the, the material is very, very stable. Um, and that is what the geotechnical study looked at. So, um, we are comfortable with that, uh, as the stamping engineer, civil engineer on the project. Um, so those were some of the key components that I wanted to point out on the development concept plan. We did have DKS look at the transportation planning rule analysis that's appropriate for a zone change. We're in compliance with TPR. Um, we're consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with TSP, we're within the urban growth boundary, all those things that staff has already outlined. Um, as I talked about earlier, um, 16th and 17th are currently three-quarter street improvements. The future subdivision will complete the road improvements. Um, so a little bit of pavement for road widening and, uh, also sidewalks, street trees, all of those improvements, lighting. Same thing with Ivy Street. Ivy Street will be widened out to its ultimate, um, required widths, um, with the subdivision. And we're going to have local streets internal to the project that have, uh, parking on both sides. Uh, we have heard that parking is a significant issue within the community. Uh, we listen to staff, and our roads are designed to have, um, parking on two sides. Um, the other thing I want to point out with the DCP is that we are showing a development pattern on land that is not part of the application this evening. So that is the land in the southwest corner. Um, we are not predicating what can happen with that land. We're showing how we are not, um, hindering future development of that site, that we're being thoughtful and, and allowing them flexibility for how they can move forward in the future. This is our water system. Water's fairly easy. It's available it today in 16th and 17th and Ivy. So we're simply continuing that pattern. Um, it's a looped system to provide redundancy, so water, um, can be developed quite reasonably. A sanitary sewer, as staff pointed out, will be gravity, um, designed to be a gravity system to the north. Um, there is a bit of grading that's involved in that. Staff mentioned unstr- non-structural fill. It will be structural fill. Um, to put homes on, we want to make sure that that is very much structural fill. Um, and the, the site is extremely flat right now. We're raising it a few feet. Um, it's not a, a significant amount of fill. There is some fill, but it does not harm the adjacent properties. There's a reasonable transition for, um, the adjacent tax lot that is in this DCP area. And then stormwater, uh, this area is primarily served with dry wells, so there's a lot of infiltration that will happen. Uh, we'll collect that street water into the dry wells, um, and homes go into individual dry wells as well. So this is overall a real public benefit. We've talked about, um, the need for it. Uh, Canby has the need for additional ho- homes. That's shown in our projections. It's shown in some of the city's, uh, projections as well. Um, this will be a complete community. It's got open space, connectivity, um, uh, recreation facilities, and, uh, we are making, uh, infrastructure improvements with roadway improvements and, uh, sanitary water. So we appreciate everyone's time. Um, we're happy to answer any questions, and we hope that you will approve us this evening. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mimi. Uh, so let's start with, um, Commissioner Mills. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, no questions.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Hutchinson?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Heeb, any questions?
Uh, no, I, uh, yeah, I'm familiar with, uh, I guess it would be Tofti North and familiar with the layout of land. It seems pretty straightforward and, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, happy with it, sir.
Commissioner Padde?
Uh, I have no specific questions, um, other than some, uh, some things I would like to see, uh, as part of the discussion portion.
Okay. That's everybody. Um, I have no questions either. So thank you very much for the presentation, very thorough. And, uh, now we'll move on to other, but there are other proponents, other people that wish to speak in favor of this project. Okay. Um, Don, do we have anybody that, uh, is in opposition to this project that would like to speak?
I am not sure. Laney, do you have a count on that? Is she still on?
I'm still here.
Okay. Um, any folks in opposition?
I think everybody was neutral, but there might be, what about you, Kamal? Are you gonna speak?
Um, I wasn't in opposition. I just had some questions on the, uh, um, walking path or park. Um, I live in the south.
If you could just state your name and address, please.
Oh, um, Kamal Salem, I live at 9117 South Alder Creek Lane, um, south of the proposed annexation, um, on the south side of the Malala River. I was just curious, on the, on the walkway above or the park, I'm, I don't, I don't know how it could work, because there's a pretty good-sized little bluff or cliff. I was curious, how do you keep, if that's a park or a walkway, how do you keep people back from the, is there going to be a fence or something on the edge? Which I don't know how you could secure the fence with it being the, the cliff that I see on my side, or bluff or whatever, whatever you call it. That's the only issue I see with the, the layout of it. And also how the, the Emerald Necklace, or Park Walkway ends on another neighbor's property, so it kind of dead ends there. But more of the concern I have is with the, the bluff part of it. How do you keep people from walking off of that?
I don't know if that's a part of the development or responsible, developer's responsibility, or if that's the city's responsibility. Don, you have an answer for that?
Um, in part, um, and some of this will get into the, in that subdivision, which is a subsequent, um, action for this. Um, part of just kind of some highlights is that there, I believe, is a hundred-foot setback from ordinary hat watermark, which is the city code for riparian setback. So it's not, my understanding is that it's not directly on a cliff. In fact, there's some land in between that and the cliff with a hundred-foot setback. Um, and so the riparian area there would, I think it could be left. I'm not sure how the demarcation, or what the, uh, design team with Mimi speak to that, about demarcation. Some of that, there would be a path. Typically, we'd have a standard for the trail, city standard. Um, I'm not sure if the, the side that goes down to the Malala would typically have some sort of, uh, boundary on that or not. That's something I'm, Eric, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that or not?
Yeah, I, um, it's 75-foot setback right there in, in the city limits, 100-foot if it's still in the county. Uh, regardless, I think there's a pretty significant buffer area between where the trail would land and the, the bluff itself. Um, I think exact design discussion would come later, um, and whether or not there's some fencing or other, other barrier to prevent people from going down there. Uh, I mean, having seen it, I mean, I suppose it's possible somebody could wander down there and, and explore the bluff, but it's, it doesn't really make so ton of sense. Um, it's, I, I just don't really see that as a major issue. And I think we could, um, obviously discuss the design of the trail and whether some protective measures are, make sense for people, um, not getting themselves in trouble with the bluff. But the reality is what, what we're reviewing here is not related to trail design, um, today. So I don't know if the applicant has anything else to speak on, on that, but...
Okay. Um, Laney, do we have anybody else that, um, you know, that would like to speak on this matter, whether, uh, in opposition or neutral?
Um, Tyson, did you want to speak still?
Yeah, are you able to hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, Don and Eric, I spoke to you both, and, uh, I do understand-
If you could state your name and address.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name's Tyson Hemrick, and I live at 1826 South Redwood Street, also, also known as Redwood Lane. Uh, it often gets confused on a map, so, uh, I understand that this is, this is in the development stage, and this is just for annexation purposes. Uh, I'm just trying to kind of put on the record some concerns moving forward, so that once we get into the details of the neighborhood being designed, that, uh, some thoughts are on the forefront of the property that borders our corner there. So I'm in the far southeast corner. So my property also is on the, uh, it's in county. corner. So my property also is on the, it's in county and it borders the urban growth boundary. So we, we also have property on both sides of the river. The concern is with the Emerald Trail and it's dead end to our property. And we've discussed a, kind of a cut through between lots, what are shown on the map as nine and 10. Being able to tie that Emerald Trail back up to the north to 13th and then to the east so that, one, it doesn't either go into Chan Beal's property or into our property and dead end and not have the ability to be able to continue through with the concept of what the, the city's trying to do with that trail. So I, I believe that, discussing that with Don and Eric, we are getting on the same page with that. I, I do want to reiterate with what Kamal was saying with the concern on the slough off with the, the cliff in 2006 is when that slid off and there was probably thirty to forty feet that was lost on that bank. The proposed geo-track right now shows seventy-foot setback from that corner that, that borders our property. If that first lot is up to that seventy-foot mark, that's, that's pretty tight. That's, that's the steepest part of that bank as well. As it goes to the east through our property, it starts to soften a bit, but the steepest section of that bank from the southeastern corner of the proposed annexation, the first three hundred feet approximately are, are vertical with no slope. And so that, that bank had sloughed off significantly in 2006 and not during the ninety-six flood. And so the river has changed, you know, tremendous, with a tremendous amount of force there. And where the water used to go one way, the river has now dramatically changed since then. And I'm, you know, I'm obviously, I don't have a geotech background, so I trust that those people do the, the work effectively and, and to a high standard. But that's obviously a concern. In terms of people visiting that bluff and bank, it happens consistently, especially with kids from Tophy neighborhood. And we see it from our property, almost on a daily basis in the summertime and even this time of year, multiple times during a week. So the concerns of somebody falling off that cliff are, are real. Kids will go right up to the edge of that and peer over. And then the other concern I have with that walking path is if that bank does slough off, is the maintenance cost on the city? Is it on the taxpayers? Is it on the HOA? If we lose trail, as we, as there becomes a requirement for maintaining people's safety, who, who does that fall onto once Posh Homes leaves? Who, who is responsible for that maintenance and upkeep of keeping people safe off of that bank? So our concern from a property owner is both safety but also people trespassing. We already deal with a tremendous amount of trespassers in the summertime trying to find river access, trying to gain the ability to get down to water away from people. So dozens of times throughout the summer, we're, we're dealing with people trespassing and I know this will significantly increase. So we are looking to make sure that there is a conservative effort to curb that. And so that's, those were, those are the concerns that I have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Laney, do we have anybody else that you know that would like to speak?
I think that's everybody.
Okay. Then in that case, close the public hearing portion of this and move on to the discussion portion.
Can we, can we have a moment for rebuttal?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, you, you have, you have all rebuttal time. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I'm going to tag team rebuttal with Mike Robinson. I want to answer some of the design questions real quick. We do share the concerns about trespass and we did receive the feedback about the north-south connection on the Emerald Trail back up to Redwood. So we are expecting to provide a pedestrian connection between Emerald Trail and Redwood, as well as another pedestrian connection between the lots at the extension of Pine Street. So the Emerald Trail tract is expected to be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association with an easement over the trail itself. So the trail will be owned by the city, but maintenance for the rest of that open space will be the responsibility of the HOA. And yes, we are absolutely planning on fencing that and making sure that the bluff is safe. So I also want to go to an exhibit that shows the bluff itself. As was described earlier, the setback from the bluff itself is pretty significant. So the contours right here, where they're very close together in gray, that is really where the, where the bluff is. That's about thirty feet down. This contour line right here is essentially the back of the lots. That's not the back of the homes, that's the back of the lots. The homes are even further back than that. So we do have anywhere from fifty feet to over seventy-five feet of, of physical setback between the lot and the bluff. And that'll be fenced for safety. That's a lot of room to be able to build that Emerald Trail, make sure that the trail is far enough from the bluff, put in the fencing and those improvements. So I just wanted to answer those questions real quick and then Mike, I'm gonna let you take it from here.
Thanks, Mimi. Good evening, Chair Sabery, members of the commission. My name is Michael Robinson. I'm a layman's attorney with the law firm of Schwab Williamson &amp; Wyatt. I worked with Polish on this and other projects. I've had the pleasure of working with Eric and Don before. So I only have two comments tonight. One is, having listened to the staff report by Eric and then the applicant's presentation, it, it appears to me that Planning Commission has the evidence before it to do as staff has recommended, which is recommend approval to the city council. And by the way, we appreciate the folks that stayed on through the earlier hearing and this one to testify tonight. Their concerns are not lost on us. When we get to the subdivision application stage, we'll be able to take their concerns into account, which is where they should be addressed, as Eric said. The only other thing Chair Sabery, I have is that if, if you or any of your colleagues have any questions, we'd appreciate a chance to answer them now before you get to discussion. Once you get to discussion, you might be able to ask us those questions. But if you have questions now, I think Commissioner Patton said he might have some in discussion, but we'd appreciate a chance to answer them. Other than that, we appreciate your time tonight. We appreciate the staff report and we hope you'll do as recommended to you, which is recommend to the city council that it approves this application. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Patton, do you want to ask your questions now or save, still save for discussion?
I am, you know, I am going to lean heavily on Don and Eric for this, but I mean, I'm more than happy to share your, my, my concerns now if you want to answer questions, but I don't want to do something out of turn. So you let me know what you want.
I would go ahead and suggest Commissioner Patton to go ahead and ask the questions fire away and that way I think it, it will give the benefit of fully discussing this before you close the hearing.
Okay. I guess for me, some of the notes that I have written down here, and this isn't necessarily questions, it's just things that I would like to see when it comes time for this to come across, planning, the, the development portion of this. I can appreciate the folks' concern regarding connecting 17th and 18th Street, or not, or 16th and 17th Street, but I am, I am not a fan of a bunch of dead-end streets. We have problems with that in the city. I am a fan of flow. And I have a deal, a bit of heartburn seeing these two fairly long streets dead-end so close to one another. I understand the racetrack concept. If you were to put in a, you know, essentially, you know, Pine, South Pine Place, which is a ninety-degree turn from, you know, 16th on to a different street and then on to 17th. But my biggest concern is that that own, that there is a huge chunk of this development which will be locked in with no real cross-functionality in streets. So that is one concern. Another concern I have is I am not, I am not a fan of payments to the parks in lieu of actual land. We have a $7 million surplus in parks now that we can't touch because we don't build any parks. So it's time to stop taking money into that and actually start getting some land into parks for these communities. Because now we've got a bunch of communities that want parks, but you know, they, the developers paid into this, to this fund and we aren't building any. So that is, I, that is one of the concerns I have. The other one is that, you know, a lot of the building plans that I have seen come across here, when they build these out in phases, some of the larger park sections are done in some of the later phases. I would be a fan of seeing that those parks, whether it be, you know, the easement or, you know, for the Emerald Triangle or this park that you are planning, to be in some of the, like the first or second portion phase rather than in the fifth or sixth. Because now it's coming after most of the people have moved into the community. I really think it's important to provide those park spaces in the, in the beginning rather than waiting until the very end. And I think that was, that was it as far as like things that I was going to say about that. Let me just double check to make sure I don't. And then I guess the other question was going to be for the city staff. Will the TSP be ready by the time this comes across for us? Because we're going to be using an outdated TSP to build a plan for how this development is going to impact traffic on the, on the surrounding streets. Yeah, I think that was all that I had written here.
Chair, Chair Sabery, this is Mr. Robinson. And I didn't want to interrupt you. Would you like the applicant to answer Commissioner Patton's questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I don't want to speak out of turn. Why don't, I'm gonna let Mimi and/or Jerry answer this. The one thing I will say, so I will speak out of turn. Before they talk, the one thing I will say is that I, I think Commissioner Patton has some good questions. As Don and Eric have observed tonight, my guess is these are likely best suited for the subdivision application. But we really appreciate hearing them now because it gives us a chance to think about how we're going to answer them at the subdivision stage. Mimi, do you or Jerry want to pick up some of the specific questions that Commissioner Patton have?
I do. And I agree with Mike. It is good to hear this information now while we're still working on the subdivision. But I want to give you some assurance on a couple of your questions. Number one, we do, our current plan does accommodate the square footage of park space that is required. So we're not proposing fee and lieu. So that, that should hopefully put your mind at ease. And in terms of phasing, that Central Neighborhood Park, the Pocket Park, that is proposed in Phase One. The Emerald Necklace is at the part of the site that doesn't have sanitary sewer until we build to it. So that would be in Phase Two. So there's, there's park facilities in each of the phases that are proposed. So the, the park build-out will be incremental with the project itself. So that will come We have heard public comment about 16th and 17th. So we do have a neighborhood meeting coming up for the subdivision. We will take more public comment and feedback about that and will consider your concerns about connectivity. I do feel that we do have good connectivity with the 18th Street east-west connection. But we'll, we'll try and balance that out and bring forward a thoughtful application before you and, and we can talk through it in subdivision application. I would defer to staff or Mr. Robinson about the TSP status. We do, for the, for the subdivision application, we do have to submit a transportation impact analysis that's being prepared by DKS. So that will study the, the build-out impacts of the project and any mitigation that is required to make sure that we're mitigating the impacts of the project. But as far as the TSP, I'd defer to Mike Robinson or staff.
And Commissioner Patton, this will be kind of a combo. Eric, on the traffic study for the subdivision, and to your point, Commissioner Patton, I think that what we're seeing with these traffic reviews is that we're requiring counts in some circumstances to have real-life information. And I don't know the circumstance of this for the subdivision, but DKS is involved. And I'm not sure if Eric can speak to that at all.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I, I can't prognosticate when the applicant will land an application in at all times for a subdivision, but my suspicion is that a TSP update would not be completed prior to a subdivision coming in. The second part is that with, DKS did do fresh counts, so current counts on their, on a more involved traffic study, at least that's my understanding, to try and capture better data. But I think the more salient point to your question is I, unless the subdivision is put off for some time, I would not expect the TSP to be updated to fall in line with this project.
And so just to that point, I mean, it's still not deficient, Commissioner Patton, because we're, I mean, this is kind of the, the freshness of these counts. I mean, yes, we have to update the TSP. That's something that's on our radar screen. I'd love to take surplus city funds and use that immediately, but that's not my prerogative. But I do know for sure that we will be working on a compliant TSP update, hoping to have funding fully defined by council July 1, 2022. And that's out of ways. But we're also trying to get our housing needs analysis and our economic opportunity analysis work done beforehand so we know what expansion areas we will need to do in the city as well to have that information. So the, the short answer is, in the interim between now and when we have the TSP done, DKS is looking at these on an individualized basis. And what we're gonna, you're gonna start to see is that there's actual counts done for these projects. And so that's something that I don't have an answer for at this moment, but is a very good question for the subdivision application that will come after this.
Okay. And so I guess just as a follow-up for that, and where I'm trying to go with this is, and I might be off-base here, considering I've only been in the application now for about six months, but here's the, here's the, here's the part I cannot get my head wrapped around. So we do this, we do a development, there's a traffic study, this is the number of cars that are using the road, bang, bang, boom, everything checks out. Well, we know that there's going to be more development. We know that there's this tax lot that these phantom roads go into that may or may not be a thing. We know that there's going to be development over here. We know there's going to be development over there. So I guess what I, what I just cannot understand is why we aren't, it, it doesn't seem to me like we're looking at these things holistically, to say, yes, we have this development that we are counting vehicles for now, but we know that developments of a similar size that will go on to these other tax lots that will eventually be a development, generate X amount of traffic. So should we be laying a game plan now as these developments are starting to have wiggle room for when the whole plan is built out? Because, you know, people talk about planning. I really want to look at this as a holistic thing to say, yes, once this is all built out, it's, it, this is what it will be. The traffic is this now, the traffic could be like this in two years, the traffic could be like this in five years. So that subsequent planning commissions don't look back on us and say, why in the heck did they move forward with this when now we have this problem where we have all this traffic on these streets that can't take it? Why couldn't they look further ahead? That's what I'm trying to get at.
And I think to your point, which is a great one, there will be, that's a big part of the November 17th Planning Commission work session that we're going to be having with you and city council, all the, all the planning commissioners, with, with DKS present and going through that exercise. present and going through that exercise of answering questions to the, that degree. I think, and this is maybe not for this hearing, but I believe that the city is in fact, you know, looking at this holistically. Explaining that to the planning commissioners is, uh, a part of this that we need to do a better job of.
And that long-term look is in your current TSP. Um, it, it's not like you're working in a vacuum. You have the existing TSP, it just needs to be dusted off and make sure that any adjustments for, for things that were unexpected over the last few years are, um, true-upped. Um, but as part of this application, when I said we, we complied with the transportation planning rule, um, that is part of that 20-year projection. So your TSP is looking at the 20-year horizon versus the subdivision that's going to look at the build-out condition. So this application's done both. Um, it will, it will eventually do both. Right now, we've done the 20-year look and because we're matching the, uh, comprehensive plan, land use designations, that generally shows that we're, um, consistent with that 20-year planned horizon. DKS made sure that it, it made sense, they looked at, um, how the counts work and, and the projections and things that have happened over time, but they did that 20-year look. When we come back with the subdivision, it's going to look at the build-out condition. So, um, your TSP may not be completely current, but it's, it's still a pretty good tool.
Well, and that's, and that's one reason why I was, that, some of those comments I was reserving more for the discussion cart, because I knew that you would not have an answer to those questions and that that, you know, that I was trying to plant the seed for when that conversation comes. I was not trying to put you, I, I didn't want you to think I was trying to put you on the spot by, by delaying those conversations, because I, it, it's not a question as to whether the annexation is a thing or not, it's more of a question that will come up when the development comes. And so they were essentially, I didn't, I knew you weren't going to be able to answer all of those questions, that's why I didn't ask them as part of the question asking section, so.
Totally get it, appreciate it, but we, we'd love to have that information ahead of time. Um, there's, there's nothing tougher than, uh, a planning commission going into deliberation with questions that we could help them with and we're not allowed to speak. So, um, this is very helpful, especially with a neighborhood meeting coming up for the subdivision, so appreciate that.
No problem.
Any, uh, any further discussion or comment, Commissioner Mills?
None.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this and we'll move into discussion. And, um, we'll start with, again, with you, Commissioner Mills.
Um, as a, uh, annexation and zone change, I'm prepared to, uh, vote for this. Um, I know there's some questions outlying, I think most of those will, uh, as has been stated previously, be, uh, adjusted during the subdivision. So, um, I have nothing else except to say I'm prepared to vote for it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hutchinson?
Um, I, I do have a little bit of concern over the composition of the hillside. I mean, I know the river goes by on the west side of town, it's pretty solid rock that the houses are built up against, but, uh, compacted soil and rivers, I think, has made for some of the oldest property disputes in history. Um, but you know, that's for the future, I guess. Um, this all kind of fits into our comprehensive plan and, you know, we can't, you know, we can't limit things based on disasters that may or may not happen. Um, it all looks like it's been well analyzed and I think for the lifespan of the houses, it'll probably be fine, but we do seem to be living on the ends of the bell curve as far as weather is concerned going forward. Um, so I'm interested to see more detailed engineering, um, when we get to the subdivision section. Um, and of course, that, that waterfront park, man, those things are popular wherever you put them, and Canby's most popular park right now is the old Malala Forest Trail, as far as the number of visitors. And so, you know, there's, I think it's all going to be good, and I think that, uh, once that path is finally finished and the comprehensive plan is filled out, it's going to be fantastic.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Patton, would you like to weigh in?
No, I think I've created glue with my questions. The one last thing I would say is that I am a huge proponent of the Emerald, uh, uh, Necklaces, they're calling it. I think that, uh, that view is the right of the people of the community to have, not necessarily individual homeowners. And so I am really excited about having that be public land and, and open to the public to enjoy. So, no, I think, uh, I think it's great and, you know, I will be voting to approve it.
Thank you very much. Did I, did I miss anybody? Okay, and, uh, bear with me for just a moment, find my, find my paperwork here.
Commissioner Heeb.
Oh, Commissioner Heeb, I'm sorry.
I was gonna just, uh, for time's sake, I was gonna let you, uh, go ahead and pass over me because I'm, I'm ready to vote, uh, vote for the annexation already, so.
Well, why don't you go ahead and I will entertain a motion to, now, do I have to have two of them, uh, Eric or Dawn? One for the annexation and, or just?
No, you can, you can roll, separate file numbers, that's fine, they, they kind of live together, so.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion, uh, to approve the Tofti South Annexation Zone Change ANN 21-01 backslash CC 21-02.
So moved.
Now, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so, um, moving on to items of interest from the planning staff. What do you got for us there, Don?
Chair Savory, a few, few items for you tonight. Um, we have an upcoming, our next work session is November 3rd on Field Carts. That's a continuation of our discussion we had previously with the planning commission and City Council. Um, so that's November 3rd, uh, at 6:00. And then also, we're also going to have the November 17th, uh, work session I spoke about on transportation issues with DKS. And then one of the items that was discussed, and I forget what's hearing tonight, but we're also going to talk about potential changes to the zoning code and kind of what the process would be for that, and, um, kind of when that might occur as well. We do understand there's some zoning code issues that need to be updated. So both of those are November 17th at 6:00. Um, a few other things, we were successful in getting Department of Land Conservation grants for the housing needs analysis and housing production strategy. Uh, it's around $100,000, which is great, uh, to get that funding, uh, which will help us to do those analysis, which will help us to figure out both, uh, what buildable lands are needed for the continuation of the city's growth. We have to have a 20-year supply of, of buildable lands in the city. It also will get into affordability and, uh, looking at efforts to make things more affordable, and specifically for what part of the population in Canby that needs that affordability. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Um, those are a few things there. There's also an economic opportunity grant that we applied for, and we're likely going to receive that as well. It's about $50,000. Um, and so the economic opportunity analysis and the housing needs and housing production strategy will all probably start in December of this year and run for about a year, um, in their, in their, their process, roughly. One thing I wanted to, uh, talk about, uh, tonight as well, I know there was a lot on this last hearing item, and we are trying to put things on a little bit more of a diet so you guys are not reading 400 pages of documentation. Tonight was a challenge on the annexation, given all the things that you guys saw, but we appreciate your diligence. Uh, we will try to make efforts to do two things. One is to reduce the amount of paper you guys are reviewing. Secondly, giving you, we can give you 10 days before the hearing on these staff reports. It's difficult for us to do this in advance of that. That's our typical situation is 10 days in advance, um, on these. But so noted, Chair Savory, uh, earlier, you mentioned before the hearing started, just the volume, and I, we appreciate the fact that you're mentioning that, um, and we're try, we're cognizant of that as well. Um, I've been looking at this, our staff's trying to whittle down our staff reports, so there's a little less reading involved, um, if, if we could possibly do that. Um, so that's kind of what I've got, uh, for you tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, do any of the commissioners, uh, have any, anything that they, any things of interest that they would like to relay to the staff?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is, uh, Commissioner Mills. I guess I wanted to just briefly report back on the, uh, OAP DLCD, uh, Virtual Planning Seminar that I attended. I think Commissioner Heeb might have been there too. Um, and it was, it was, uh, it was good. Uh, I particularly thought the, uh, question and answer session was very valuable where they were fielding questions from planners and there's some really good exchange there, so that was, that was worth the price of admission alone for the QA. I guess I wanted to pass along one recommendation that came out of that seminar from the presenters. I'm going to mention this to staff and the commission. They're saying that they're recommending that cities provide planning commissioners with emails, with email addresses. And they say that because they feel like cities should be providing that protection to planning commissioners to prevent them from potential litigation and seizure of their email records. So I'm, I'm, uh, mentioning that to you, I'm passing it along. I spent a lot of time working in a very litigious, uh, uh, city, Eugene, and, uh, never had a city email for that. So, uh, I'm not telling you that, boy, I think it's a great idea, but somebody thinks it's a good idea, so I offer that to you. Um, I'd be happy to have one if you offered it, uh, but it's something that was recommended by the presenters at that seminar. So wanted to get that out in front of staff and the other commissioners.
If I might weigh in on that a little bit. Um, we received, uh, we received direct communications from the legal department of the City of Portland on a regular basis, saying that any information that we pass between the city and our personal accounts, whether you're talking about texts, phone calls, uh, emails or any of that, they can subpoena, essentially, your tinier life to parse out what is city property and what isn't. Um, so, uh, I, I do want to support everything that Commissioner Mills has just said.
Oh, sounds like a great idea.
And I, I can, uh, take that up and on our end and see if there's a way to get you guys all city, uh, email addresses instead of your, your personal. I'm not sure what's involved with that. It, it's unfortunate that things have gotten so crazy that you would be subpoenaed on that, but we understand that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, any other discussion from any of the commissioners for the staff?
This is Jason, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, first, I want to third the whole, uh, planning commission email thing. When I took, when I was appointed to planning commission, I thought that it was odd that I continued to use my personal email for this. You know, I have, I had been subpoenaed, uh, a couple of times as a city councillor, and that was not a pleasant experience. And so it's not that I do anything wild and crazy in my personal life that I would be ashamed of someone to see my emails, but, uh, you know, it's, it's still that, I, I agree, I think that might be something good to look at. Um, I did just want to, uh, mention, we had kind of talked about parking, and I will apologize, for some reason, my computer has decided that I no longer am allowed to use its camera, so I have got to IT that out here in a little bit. Um, but as far as parking, you know, I just want to say I have some real concerns regarding, uh, the parking downtown. Um, a few years back, I was having a conversation with, uh, city councillor, and I said, you know, Canby has a real parking problem, and I kind of got my head bit off a little bit and told, no, it doesn't, everything's fine. Well, everything is not fine. Um, as, I, I don't think there has been much of a plan put into the downtown parking. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about building parking garages or expanding parking lots and such, but I know, I see no comprehensive plan as far as how to deal with that. And I have a feeling that with the Beer Library and with some other things that I know are coming down the pike, that we are going to end up in a real sticky situation. My litmus for this is the Cutts Forest parking lot. So the parking lot across from Key Bank at the intersection of, uh, Ivy and Second Avenue, where the Lions Club sets up the tree lot, is my litmus test for this. When the Dahlia was first put in, uh, there were a few cars there. Now, as things have continued to get more popular, and just today when I passed by, that parking lot is about three-quarters full. That is a private parking lot that is owned by Cutts Forest. It is not a city lot, it is not Key Bank's lot, it is not the Dahlia's lot. And so now, I, I, I think whether it's this body or city council or whoever it is, we really need to take a hard and fast look as to what we're going to do about parking downtown, because it is going to, it is going to become a mess. Um, so, uh, that is one of the seeds that I had on my list to plant. Um, another one is, so I don't know whether I'm going to the wrong place, but when I look at all the exhibits and stuff for the meetings, I go onto the website and I go to that section, and for instance, uh, this, for this planning meeting, uh, when you go to the website, all of the, uh, exhibits for this meeting are all called Agenda Packet, and there's 20 of them. And as I was trying to toggle down through things and flip back and forth between different things, it became very difficult, and it could be just because I have short-term memory loss, that to keep track of what one I hadn't clicked on or what one I had clicked on, so I don't know if there's any way to like name those differently so that way it's easy for, easier for us to keep track of what they are, so if we're looking for a specific thing, we can click on it. Um, and then the, the last thing was, Don, I had sent you an email, uh, asking, uh, and I CC, uh, Chair Savory on this, about getting together with you and, uh, just having a conversation about the upcoming thing regarding the, uh, code changes. I have a feeling that sometimes in these meetings, I ask questions that are semi-remedial, and I would much rather sit down and flesh that out in person ahead of time, so that way I am not wasting time with questions, uh, and eye-rolling, uh, during the actual thing so we can get more done. Is that, I want to see if you got that email or if that's a problem, what is your thoughts on that?
Um, and I don't recall getting that, Commissioner Patton.
Neither do I.
Yeah, and so, but so, actually, yeah, I'd love to do that, uh, and to be honest with you, a lot of the stuff, I mean, I think it's important that you bring stuff up in these hearings and discussions. I mean, I, I do think that there's value in that and, uh, but I think that as we all try to get together and try to sort things out, um, I think it would be good to do, uh, meeting with, uh, with Commissioner or Chair Savory and yourself, Commissioner Patton, and I'd love to sit down with you guys and, and talk through that. I think that this parking thing could get wrapped into our update of our TSP. I was just thinking, you know, broadly about, you know, how we're, how could we, I think part of that is evaluating the, the situation first. Parking is a really challenging issue when you have enforcement on it. I think first of all is understanding it and what that is, and that's, again, we can talk more about that, but I think there's some discussion around that, um, that needs to happen. And then some of the other questions that you raised tonight were excellent, and, um, some of them may be things that we want to think about process changes in our zoning code as we continue forth and, um, and do things. And, you know, and part of that is, um, you know, making things work for the city and encouraging development, but also making sure it's done correctly. Those are the balancing things that we're always trying to strive for.
Don, the, one of the issues that I have with our meeting, our combined meetings with, with the City Council is, they are generally, uh, last at most 90 minutes, and we meet once or twice a year. That is totally an inadequate time, and I've said this many times before, it's fallen on deaf ears, but, uh, that is not enough time to go into these issues. That we should be having these meetings between the City Council and the planning and the planning commission and staff, um, on a more regular and frequent basis, uh, you know, and more than ninety minutes. And so if you're devoting, you know, two or three hours a year to talking about the transportation issues, uh, that are going to be, uh, overwhelming us in the near future, um, that's, that's, I, I, that's totally inadequate in my opinion. And, and I agree with, with Commissioner Patton. You know, these are, we've got some issues coming up with overall transportation, parking, things like that that, uh, get short shrift. Uh, uh, I think the Planning Commission, we've kind of been pushing this for quite some time and the city council, in my observation, is, moves on to other stuff very quickly. They're, they're, they're busy doing their political gamesmanship and it doesn't really benefit the, the overall well-being of the city of Canby. One man's opinion.
Well, and, and so noted, and thank you. I, you know, I think part of this is, um, trying to use the limited windows of time for this, when we do the joint ones, it makes it challenging. I totally agree. And then on staff's, staff's end, it's compressing down topical matters to make it work and fit within that confines and sometimes it's not even ninety minutes. Uh, that's, that's at the maximum, 'cause they're actually supposed to be starting a hearing at that point, uh, the council is. And so, I, I think that, you know, let me, uh, take that back and there may be other structural ways of doing this, we could do some sort of charrette with just the Planning Commission or some sort of meeting that's longer in duration. And, and these are important items and they do take time to discuss and that's the challenge. Um, uh, so I'm, I don't know what the solution is. I, I absolutely, I hear what you're saying, 'cause I, to be honest, I kinda struggle with that too, which is like, we're kind of under the gun when we start on these work sessions because there's just not that much time. And it's like, yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I, and so it's like trying to find other ways and other, uh, venues that we can do that in. I will look at that and see what we can do to, I think some of that's one, you know, like, um, you and, uh, Commissioner Patton and I meeting, but there may be other, like, venues where we just do Planning Commission alone without the council and discuss things for a longer duration and more frequently.
Um, and so I'll just, I'll, I, I just wanna make sure that I make it clear where this is coming from, um, where my thoughts are coming from on this. So, here, here is, here's my train of thought. So as you may or may not know, uh, I had applied for the open council position and I was told by two of, uh, the commissioners or of the counselors that, uh, they couldn't, uh, they didn't see fit to elevate me to the position because my drive of getting projects done on the Planning Commission is just too valuable. So, that is my marching orders. And so, that I am going to push to take up some of these issues that have sort of been set aside and get these moving. Uh, another one that was mentioned recently by, uh, uh, Counselor Hensley was that we should not be canceling Planning Commission meetings, that if we have a meeting where there is nothing on the agenda, we should be doing work sessions. And so I think it is, uh, more than, it should be more than appropriate that on Monday, when we may not have, uh, a full plate, that the city council is more than welcome to be invited to one of our Planning Commission meetings to take part in one of our meetings and start to hash some of this out, rather than us trying to squeeze in ahead of the city council meeting and be compressed for time. So, those are two of the thoughts. I apologize in advance if I sound a little bitter, but it is what it is. So there you have it.
Yeah, and thank you. And I think that, you know, um, I, I think that, uh, we don't have a lot of those gaps at this point, just to be honest with you. Pretty much we have hearings all the way through the end of the year. Um, you know, maybe with the exception of Christmas week, which I don't think we're gonna actually have a hearing on that week. But, um, I think it's so noted, um, I think that we could also do some set-asides and I need to kinda come back with you guys and, um, and talk about that and, you know, you know, we have like, we can set some other work sessions up, but I also, let's offline, if we could discuss, maybe as a starting point, Commissioner Patton, you and, uh, Commissioner, Chair Savory and I discussing, um, you know, maybe, uh, sit down and kind of, some of this is also a triage as well as to priority, um, 'cause there's a lot going on and like, what would be most helpful?
Excellent, that's all I had.
Okay.
Can I show you something real quick, Commissioner?
Yeah.
To your point, Commissioner Patton. So, on the website, under Planning Commission thing, if you, uh, go to the View Details, so here's the Agenda Packet that you were describing, Commissioner Patton. If you click on View Details, it'll give you the separate items and...
Oh my gosh, well that makes total sense! Why didn't I know about that? Now I will know!
I'll do it, but now you can see, yeah, each exhibit, um, the different info, so.
Awesome, no that's great. And I, and I did just before, one last thing, I'm sorry, uh, I did just wanna take this opportunity. I know that there is a ton of stuff coming across the desks of you, Don, and, uh, Eric and all the other folks in the Planning Department. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the tremendous amount of time and detail and effort that you put into all this stuff, so it makes our jobs a lot easier as volunteers and it is greatly appreciated.
It, it, I'll, I'll second that. Thank you, Jason, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Any, anything else from, uh, for staff from other commissioners?
Nope, I'm, I'm, nothing else.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
You'll second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Headstained? No, that's okay. We're, we're gonna adjourn. Thank you very much. Everybody have a great evening.